Moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can everybody hear? I take that as a no. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody. We want to start with the roll call, please. Madam Clerk.
Jamie Girardi.
Here.
Christopher Poole.
Here.
John Moody.
Here.
Matthew Munn. Derek Quantler. Christopher William.
Here.
Chairman Charles Gray.
Here.
And the proof of applications, please.
The items are advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on January 8th, 2025, February 5th, 2025, and March 3rd, 2025, all by Alpha Date, certified mail-in contact.
All right, thank you so much. So, for those of you who haven't been here before, I want to go through briefly the, how we operate in terms of what we do and what we're going to listen to today. So, we're the Planning Commission, and we're appointed by the Board of County Commissioners, and we meet twice monthly. We serve as a local planning agency, and we hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive planments, land development code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, our final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it would be important for you to attend that Board of County Commissioner meeting. You'll have a second opportunity to voice your concerns. Those of you who are not familiar with the format, whether it's divided into three sections, typically we have continuances for requests. It's been our custom that if a request comes from the staff or from the applicant, unless there are extenuating circumstances, we would grant those requests. We have consent items, those are items that are on our agenda that we have not had any objections from the public or the staff, and we'll go through those one at a time. If there's one that we raised that you want to have talked about, when we announce it, just raise your hand, and we'll pull it from consent and put it on the regular items. And the third item is the regular items, and those will be things will be vetted thoroughly today. You'll all have a chance to get up and speak or ask questions. Applicants will have five minutes to make their presentation, and questioners will have three minutes to get up and state their concerns, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to come back up and answer those concerns. This is a time too now, and before we get started, that we ask for public comment on anything that is not on today's agenda. Is there anybody here to speak on anything that's not on today's agenda?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I would like to note that we have nobody signed up to speak for general public comment today, or on WebEx as well.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. So, this is a good opportunity. Before we start, if anybody has a cellphone, including me, we will put it on the silent position so that we won't disturb somebody that's up here speaking, and it's important for the public to wait their turn to speak. You'll be called up, you'll be asked to state your name and address, and into the microphone so that the recording secretary can get that information, and then you'll be given the time, I believe. Is it time of working? Is it our time of working?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, thank you. So, anybody who's planning to speak today, what we call give testimony today, would if you would please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn? Anybody that's going to speak, okay?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
Okay, thank you very much. All right. I think we can begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Commission, good afternoon. Gianna German, Planning Development and Economic Growth. The first item that we have on the agenda is item PC-1, PDE-25-7822, a special exception in the name of Irina Whitmire/Dog Kennel, special exception. This is coming with the request to continue the item to April 17th, 2025, Planning Commission, at 1:30 p.m. in Newport-Ritchie.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay, see no objections. We're going to, we have several continuances, so we're just going to go through them, and then we'll make a motion at that time.
Okay, the next item we have on the agenda is item PC-2, PDE-25-7874, it's a special exception in the name of Mirs4LLC/Mirz Special Exception, and this is coming to you with the request to continue the item to April 17th, 2025, Planning Commission, at 1:30 p.m. in Newport-Ritchie, and I would like to note this item also has a companion rezoning, PC-5, on your agenda.
Okay. So, we're asking for continuance on both of those, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? See no objections?
Mr. Chair, I'll ask that you, the Planning Commission vote on those separately, as I'm conflicted on two and five.
And just to be clear for the record, the continuance date on PC-5 is the same as PC-2?
Yes, sir.
Okay, 417. Okay.
All right, the next item we have.
Wait, so can we just go and get a motion to continue those two, please?
Motion to continue PC-2 and PC-5 to April 17th?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, like, sign. Okay.
Let the record reflect that Commissioner Moody abstained.
Right.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is item PC-3, PDE-25-CU-01, it's a conditional use in the name of C&amp;M Low Limited Partnership and Port Hudson Marina LLC/Old Dixie Highway Marina, and this is coming with the request to continue the item to April 17th, 2025, Planning Commission, at 1:30 p.m. in Newport-Ritchie.
Okay, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object?
Unlike the other two, I'm also conflicted on this one.
So, let's get a separate motion on this one here, then.
Motion to continue PC-3?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion of the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like, sign.
Let the record reflect again, Commissioner Moody abstained.
Okay, the next item we have is item PC-4, PDE-25-CU-08, it's a conditional use in the name of Reubrich Ronald C. and Patsey M. Living Trust/Bexley New Land, and this is coming with the request to continue the item to April 17th, 2025, Planning Commission, at 1:30 p.m. in Newport-Ritchie.
Okay, the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay?
The next item on the list is PC-5, and as mentioned previously, item PC-5 is the companion rezoning to item PC-2.
So, we've already continued PC-5.
Right.
I think you can move to PC-6.
PC-6. And we've already noted that we've had one abstention from that. Mr. Moody, right?
Yes.
Okay, item PC-6, you are sending us the local planning agency for PDE-25-0109. It's a comprehensive plan amendment CPA-2403, Elite 52 PD, and this is coming with the request to continue the item to the April 3rd, 2025, Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 p.m. in Dade City, and I would also like to note that the next item on the agenda, PC-7, is the companion rezoning.
Okay.
Is the continuance date for PC-7 the same?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's 48, 43, I mean.
43.
In Dade City, okay?
43.
Is the applicant present? Okay, anyone here to object? Okay, see no objection. Okay.
Okay.
Do you want to hear a motion? Let's just do this together.
You probably need to handle the continuance.
So, make a motion to continue PC-1 and PC-4 to April 17th in Newport-Ritchie, and PC-6 and PC-7 to April 3rd in Dade City.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion of the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like, sign. Okay?
Item PC-8, we now have individuals signed up for this item, so it asks if we can go ahead and pull this one from consent.
Okay, so that'll move to regular. Okay, so those are all the continuance items, and now we have.
Well, PC-8 was a consent item, but.
Okay.
Should we do on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Excuse me, Liam Devine, Planning Development and Economic Growth Department. So, we actually had a request from the applicant to continue PC-8. It was on your agenda as a consent item, so we do know individuals are here to sign up, so if you maybe want to take their public comment, but the applicant is requesting the item to continue to the Newport-Ritchie Planning Commission at 1:30 p.m., April 17th.
Okay.
So, I would just remind, I mean, you can take public comment, but I'd just remind those individuals speaking that if you speak to it today, you will not be able to speak to it again when it, on the date it's continued to, so, but if you're not going to be available on that continuance date, this would be the date you should speak to it.
Okay, does everybody understand that? This, is the applicant present? Okay. So, this item has been requested to be continued to April the 17th?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
And, so if there's, is there anybody here to speak to that one today?
The comment you mean for eight?
Yes, for eight, yes. Okay.
So, if you're not going to be here on the continuance date, this would be the best time for you to speak to it.
And so, we need your name, address, and have you been sworn?
Okay, I'm Herbert Heap, I live at 2131 Old Gunn Highway in Odessa, and anyway.
Herbert, you've been sworn, right?
Pardon?
You were sworn?
Yes, I was.
Thank you, thank you.
Sure was. Anyway, I live, if you took Old Gunn Highway and Blissfield Road behind that low, I own all that property from Blissfield on down to Interlaken, and by the school bus garage is on my west side, got him for a neighbor over there. But anyway, my, only two comments really. Old Gunn Highway, they finished it from State Road 54 to my driveway, and from there on south to Interlaken is bad news. You need to take a ride out there and look at it. There's going to be a wreck. Anyway, they put in the road from 54 to my driveway, it's brand new, and a five-foot trail, all-purpose trail. So, something's going to have to be done to Old Gunn Highway and put a new trail in, or I'd like to see them do the whole road, but I don't know what you guys are going to do. The second concern I had, I didn't see a water retainer pond. If you've got a 31,000-square-foot building and all that asphalt, where's the water going to go? And I own, that property, we're talking about the Mark Lanton's property there, anyway, on the corner, I own the right-of-way right behind it. It goes clear to Interlaken up to my property. There's a 45-foot right-of-way through there, and I've already had trouble because of the engineering that did the lows, the road for them. They put a bubbler right in front of my property, there's no place for the water to go, so I'm going to have a, if we get any hard rains like we did last year, I'm going to have a problem there, but if they put up a 31,000-square-foot building in that parking lot, where are they going to dump the water? So, that is a concern because to the west of that property, it drains downhill. I had the maps on at the top, I think you call them topography maps, but anyway, that's about my two major concerns, is Old Gunn Highway, the trail, a five-foot, whatever trail they got there, and I know Catherine, she's going to make sure you get that, so anyway, and the water, so, anyway, that's all. Anybody, any questions for me, or?
Thank you, but I just, you should know that when they come in after, if they get the property rezoned, they still have to go through the engineering process to get the permits, they'll have to show that they have the proper drainage, and if they don't have it, they won't be approved, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you coming here.
Appreciate it.
Is there anybody else that was going to speak to this issue today?
I think he was the only one.
I do have to ask, does the applicant want to rebut any of those comments today, or just wait till the continuance? The applicant's saying wait till the continuance? Okay.
Mr. Chair, we do have one more person signed up, a Mr. Ricky Miller, to speak on PC-8.
Okay, he's going to wait, thank you very much. Um.
Make a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to continue PC-8 to April 17th?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like, sign. Okay, so that's going to be continued to April 17th. Okay?
Okay, now we are moving. Now we're moving on to the consent agenda, we have item PC-9, PDE-25-7722, a zoning amendment in the name of Carley Properties LLC for a change in zoning from MF1, multi-family medium-density district, to C3, commercial light manufacturing district, located in northwest Pasco County, on the south side of New York Avenue, approximately .64 miles east of the intersection of US Highway 19 and New York Avenue. The subject site contains approximately 10 acres, and this is coming to you with the recommendation of approval from Planning Development and Economic Growth Department.
All right, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object?
And I'll ask that you guys vote on this separately, too, due to conflict.
All right, let's, do I hear a motion?
So, moved.
I'll second.
So, we have a motion and a second, and I think we have an abstention. Is that right, John?
Yes.
Okay. So, John Moody is abstaining from this particular vote, so all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like, sign. Okay, motion carries.
Item PC-10, I would like to note that expertises were received and will be sent to the clerk's office for this item, and this is another item that we have individuals signed up for, and I would request that we pull this from consent.
That's PC-10?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have people here to speak on PC-10? A few people, okay. All right, Barbara? For the applicant?
Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard, Newport-Ritchie, 34652. We did not know that our neighbors were interested, there's some peculiar drainage issues in this area, so we'd like to ask for a continuance so we can reach out and meet with these folks. I think they deserve the ability to have some one-on-one conversations with our drainage engineer and ourselves, so we'd ask for a continuance for one month.
Okay.
So, again, since this was not advertised as a continuance, we need to see if there's anybody that wants to speak to the issue today that cannot be here at the continuance date.
So, the idea is the applicant is saying that they would like to have a chance to meet with those here that are concerned about it, and then come back in a month, and you can either come up and speak now, or you can wait till then to hold your fire.
We can talk and wait, if that's okay with everyone.
Okay.
Will they notify us?
Yes, we're going to, we're going to give you a date right now.
So, what was the request to continuance date again, Barbara?
417.
417, Newport-Ritchie?
Move to continue item PC-10 to 417 in Newport-Ritchie.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion of the motions? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like, sign. Okay.
The next item that we have on the agenda today is PC-11, PDE-25-0078, a comprehensive plan amendment CPAS-2418, OLC 13 state properties Phase 1, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future of land use maps 2-15 and sheet 01. This comprehensive plan amendment is changing from RES 3, residential 3 dwelling units per gross acre, to IL, industrial light, on approximately 7.93 acres of real property located on north of Comer Road, south of State Road 5756, east of Pine Products Road, and west of Bauer Road. We recommend the local planning agency find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay, I don't see anyone. I'll go to the next one.
Item PC-12, PDE-25-0097, a comprehensive plan amendment CPAS-2414, in the name of County Line North PD, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use maps 2-15 and sheet 05, changing from RES 1, residential 1 dwelling unit per gross acre, to PD, plan development, on approximately 38.68 acres of real property. This is located on the south side of County Line Road, a text amendment creating a sub-area policy flu 7.1.85, County Line North PD, and a map amendment to the future land use map 2-9, adding sub-area map 2-9, County Line North PD. This item has two companion zoning amendments as well on the agenda today, PC-13 and PC-14, and we recommend the local planning agency find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay, we've got one person that's objecting.
So, it sounds like you need to pull the PC-12 from consent. Is that person also objecting to PC-13 and PC-14? Yes, okay, so it sounds like you need to pull all three from consent.
Okay.
I think you only have one item left on your consent agenda.
Motion to approve PC-11, it's part of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like, sign. Okay?
Okay, so before we hear item PC-15 and PC-16, which are land development code amendments, we're going to jump to number 17 on the agenda, which is a presentation of the resilience Pasco project.
We have to take up the regular agenda, so I do, you need to have the hearings on PC, well, we'll try to remember what's going on.
12, 13, 14.
You need to hear 12, 13, 14.
Mr. Chairman, members of the LPA, my name's Ed Zodyan, I'm with Planning Services. The matter before you is, the County Line Road PD. The project overview is, it's the proposal for a comprehensive, excuse me, plan amendment from RES 1, residential 1 dwelling unit per gross acre, to PD, plan development, on approximately 38.68 acres. It will comprise of 300 townhomes and approximately 10,000 square feet of commercial and office space. There is a sub-area policy, and as you know, there's also the companion MPUDs, which will be heard later. The location, as you can see, is in the North Market area. The North Market area, a principle of the North Market area, is that local-serving commercial should be integrated with medium-density residential. Two, the purported, or the proposed, excuse me, aligns with, excuse me, policy flu 1.8.7, which says that the development of non-residential development should be along county arterials. which says that the development of non-residential development should be along county arterials. The proposal is consistent with that and also locates the employment generating uses on the front and the residential in the rear. Two, it is gracious, excuse me. It is consistent with policy flu 1.8.10, which is the preservation of employment generating uses. As you can see in the context map, the site is on County Line Road. It is in the vicinity of Pasco Mine, North Ridge, and the primary roads are Sun Coast Parkway and Shady Hills. Transportation network shows that it is running on County Line Road. As you can see, the site is in blue. There's also a conceptual trail along County Line Road. TNA, which I expect you'll get into with the MPUDs, do recommend, does recommend a westbound turn lane. The existing future land use, as you can see, is surrounded by the PD, which is North Ridge. And what for the industrial use sits next to it, it's primarily all residential in the area. The proposed future land use would make this consistent with the PD next with the North Ridge, which is to the west and south. The existing zoning shows that the MPUD again surrounds it. It is AC with I2 to the east. There is a subarea policy which limits it to the 300 townhomes as well as the 10,000 square feet of, excuse me, commercial. The proposal is consistent with these following comprehensive plan amendments, and for that we respectfully request that you recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that it's consistent and approval. May I answer any questions?
Any questions from the dice?
What's the?
Yes, Chris?
I just have one comment. So I know in the, in the school questionnaire we provided in there, we said that this would be zoned for Mary GL Elementary, but with the addition of this other parcel, now it's split. So for the applicant's knowledge, we will, we'll figure out what the appropriate zone should be for that whole development, and so we'll look at that before any homes are built in there. So it could wind up in Shady Hills Elementary or it might stay in Mary GL. We'll just have to review that prior to. That won't make, that doesn't make any difference on us having an issue with this particular development.
May I answer any other questions?
Yeah, just, what's the approximate residential density, since this is a PD?
It's approximately seven units gross acre.
So that's a medium density?
Yes, it is.
Okay, any other questions? All right, was there somebody from the audience that wanted to speak?
Well, I asked you a question. Well, since all, since 12, 13, and 14 are all related, I don't know if you want to open up the public, have staff introduce all three items and let the applicant and the objector speak to all three items. Barbara, is that okay with you?
Okay, let's do that.
And if I may jump in here, also this one, well, I think this one's already in Shady Hills, so that wouldn't change.
Okay.
Good afternoon, William Vermillion, Planning, Development, Economic Growth. It appears that this podium inches closer and closer to you guys each time I do this. Somebody's moving it up on me. This is the first of the two MPUDs here, the Sun City County Line Road North MPUD, PDE 257849. This is a zoning amendment from AC Agricultural to MPUD Master Plan Unit Development to allow for the maximum development of 156 platted townhomes and 10,000 square feet of commercial on roughly 19 acres. This is two miles east of the Sun Coast Parkway. Here's the rough location map. Like Ed pointed out, this is in the North Market area on the border with Hernando County. Area location of the first subject site. The zoning map reflecting agricultural. The future land use indicating rez one. Here is the contextual map for this subject site. Just to the west, there are two industrial parcels, one industrial heavy, one I2. To the south is the already approved North Ridge MPUD, which is roughly 750 residential dwelling units and 60,000 square feet of commercial retail along the frontage of County Line Road, and also the existing Pasco Mine is just there to the bottom right corner. There are three variation requests with this MPUD. The first is 9016D11. The applicant is not proposing to provide an interconnect to the south. The North Ridge MPUD is already in for plating, and it wasn't approved with a connection there, so the applicant didn't have an option to, to connect to the North Ridge MPUD. The second variation from 9052E requires a type B landscape buffer internally between the uses, between the non-residential and the residential for walkability and overall connectivity within the project. The applicant is not proposing to do the visual screening portion of that type B buffer. They're going to do the rest of the type B sans that, that visual screening to really enhance the connectivity internally. And the last one from 9013A about emergency access. This is the applicant requesting to provide a third lane in lieu of the separate emergency access condition. There's constraints with providing an emergency access because of the spacing on County Line Road. Here's the master plan for this MPUD. This one does come to you with a binding MPUD plan, not a binding concept plan. This is it here, showing the layout of those townhomes with the park space centrally located as well as the non-residential along the frontage. There are non-residential building standards referencing orientation to County Line Road and internally included in your condition packets, as well as the, the cross connections there to the adjacent MPUD, which you'll be hearing shortly, which then takes you into the North Ridge commercial area with a, acting as a reverse frontage to County Line Road. And with this, this comes with a recommendation of approval from Planning, Development, Economic Growth. I'm here for any questions.
William, I do one question. I don't know that I have a problem with you changing the name to a binding MPUD plan, but your condition of approval still refers to it as a binding concept plan.
Correct, so it kind of, we got caught halfway. We were moving in the direction of the nomenclature of binding concept plan. Halfway through this, we've been meeting with stakeholders and trying to fix the contradictory nature of that phrase. Before BCC, we can adjust it to binding MPUD plan to be consistent with the new policy memorandum.
What exactly does that mean?
So there's a, there's a forthcoming policy memorandum right now that we're working out with the stakeholders that will be available shortly. We're, we're probably 90% of the way there with our stakeholders before we take it to the BCC for approval and their ultimate recommendation, if that meets the directive that they wanted us to follow.
What's the intent?
The intent is to follow the LDC 402, which already lays out some of these aspects that are required of an MPUD master plan. They hadn't been, over the years possibly, they hadn't been followed in, in a manner than which the BCC thought was appropriate. So this memo offers interpretations to each of those sections on how they should be fulfilled. Nothing new and above the existing code.
Is the applicant okay with you renaming it? Because what's attached in our agenda memo and targets, in the agenda, it still calls it a binding concept plan, so is the applicant okay with it being renamed?
We can ask her. I mean, I'm sure it's just nomenclature, it's going to act the same.
I don't know, although.
Barbara Willhite again. We can probably call it anything we want. I'll work with staff to get the, the language consistent with their recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Chris?
So, so there's a lot of these kind of parcels, and so are we going to continue? You think we're going to continue to see a bunch of townhomes in those parcels, or any, any things that you see coming in the future?
Me? Oh, you're going to PC 14? Okay, I'll answer this question while you bring it up.
Oh, okay.
So like Ed said, this is, this development is what the North Market area intended for this specific area. I can't speak to eastward or westward away from the North Market area on whether or not this kind of development would occur, but medium density with commercial frontage and connectivity is what the comprehensive plan contemplated.
Sure, just wanted to see what you were looking at in the future. Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
William, I've got one question, and this is probably more for the applicant, and they can clarify, but, and I don't care if they do it with this item or with 14 or however we do that, but what is the status of County Line Road and the four-laning of County Line Road?
Sure, so I actually had a finding of fact in my agenda memo about this. Myself and Mr. Patrick Dutterin, working on these, we reached out to FDOT about this because we were aware of the four-lane that was going to go on. They're currently in the process of redoing the PDNE. I know that they had one in the past. They're currently redoing it, but what we do know preliminarily is that there's a two-lane, there's a two-lane portion and then the four-lane portion, and with the four-lane portion, the multi-use path is going to be on the south side along this project frontage with a sidewalk on the north side, but FDOT has no timeline.
And is there adequate right-of-way?
There is already right-of-way dedicated. I can let Barbara speak to the specifics since I could only measure it off of Mapper, but we had no ultimate build-out typical to work with from FDOT. All they told us was, we're, we're back at the drawing board and we have no timetable.
Yeah, because, and the reason I'm asking that question, I believe there's either 80 or 90 feet of right-of-way in this area, and projects on the north side, this one's a little different because you've got Hernando on the north and you've got Pasco on the south. Projects right across the street on the Hernando side are asking for 40 feet of right-of-way. Is, is Pasco going to be short on our side or not? That's why I was asking the question. I don't know, maybe when they come up, maybe the applicant can...
Can you bring up Mapper? There, there is right-of-way existing along the frontage, and Liam can bring that up, and Barbara, if you know exactly how much it is.
What I can add to the conversation is that the current PDNE has the right-of-way coming off the Hernando side. That's probably why you're seeing that. And all the communications with FDOT regarding this, they have not stated that anything will come off the south side. So that's our best information. There was a memorandum of understanding entered into between Hernando County and the Pasco County that took forever, and they finally joined hands and got that done. The project is on the MPO priority list, and FDOT is now engaged to move the project forward, so. That's what I know about it. Thank you.
Very good.
All right, anything else? Okay, William, I think we're good.
Perfect.
How are you doing the 14 also?
I was lucky enough to have both of these, yes, sir.
Okay.
This is the neighboring MPUD, Sun Coast Village MPUD, PDE 257820. Very similar to what you just heard sans the commercial. This is 144 platted townhomes on 19.3 acres, two miles east of the Sun Coast, a rezoning from AC Agricultural to MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development. Same location, next-door neighbor. The zoning reflecting agricultural and the future land use as well, rez one. The same exact concept map, just the subject site is flipped now to the, the westerly parcels there budding North Ridge. One variation request, it's the same as the previous. Applicant wasn't able to provide an interconnect to the south because of the, the platted North Ridge subdivision that's happening currently. The master plan for this project, and this is the same conversation that we're going to have on this one. The binding MPUD plan, originally this project mirrored the other project with commercial frontage. However, the applicant was kind enough to work with both of their applicants as well as PDE staff to provide a comprehensive planning strategy for these two as well as the area. So that commercial area went away in lieu of larger park space because of the amount of commercial being provided just on the frontage in North Ridge as, as well as the 10,000 square feet now being provided to the east. So we have a nice park frontage on this, this reverse frontage road here, and that's, that's the only difference in terms of the MPUD binding plan, and this comes as well with the recommendation of approval with conditions from Planning, Development, Economic Growth.
Okay, William, any other questions?
So on PC 13, looking back at the concept plan for that, you're showing an interconnect to the, what would that be, to the east, to the industrial property?
It'll be a stubout in case, yeah, it's a woodchipping facility currently, so there is the possibility that it is redeveloped, it's not a heavy use.
10-4.
Okay. So I'll do it, Barbara. Thank you, William.
Thank you, sir.
Barbara Willhite again. I have the pleasure of representing both of these projects as well as the North Ridge project. Can we do the Sun City PowerPoint? I'm going to try to not duplicate myself, even though they're two separate projects. I do want to tell you while we're bringing that up, what's going on in this area. So previously, and to Mr. Williams' question, what's going on in this area? So for a long time, there was an interlocal agreement between Hernando County and Pasco County for sewer. Never used, and Hernando decided they didn't want to provide sewer. The project, the North Ridge project, which is being developed by REPA, which are both developers and site contractors, they worked with the county to bring water and sewer to this area. So the sewer is currently located at Shady Hills Elementary on Shady Hills Road. That extension is 31,800 linear feet. The water is currently on County Line Road, but to the west. That extension is 10,300 linear feet. So the county has made a decision that they no longer wanted to rely upon Hernando County, which ultimately all that did was allow growth on the Hernando County side because the county didn't get any sewer on, on this side. So the Board of County Commissioners partnered with REPA to get utilities to this area. So we're seeing that natural progression of growth. And what staff wanted to do, because both these projects presented themselves at the same, similar time, and North Ridge was also in play at the similar time, they wanted to see these three projects coordinated. So all three of these projects have binding, whatever kind of plans you want to call them, binding blank plans, so that we could have a coordination. And the way I look at it is if you, if this project came as one, this is how you'd want to see it done. We really did a great job working between the projects and having them coordinate, even though it slowed them down, that we could bring forward a coordinated plan and say, this is how this is going to function. So that's a little bit of background while Liam was getting this ready for me. That is really hard to see. So again, this is what's going on in the area. There's a lot of growth on the north side, on the Hernando side, not so much on the south side because of the situation until recently. And I would tell you that REPA's under construction, that sewer line and water line has been under construction since January. So this is not something that we, is on paper, it's actually happening. There's not a lot, my teams tell me there's not a lot of townhomes in this area, and that's why they are adding townhomes for their project here, their projects. This is the Sun City, staff's gone over that. You can see the commercial portion, 10,000 square feet, the residential portion, which are townhomes. And there's, the layout is very purposeful to try to maximize the environment as you go west, because ultimately at North Ridge, there's 14 acres of commercial, and that sits on, and that's 60,000 square feet. So we really wanted to see these three projects as you move between the projects and really encourage people to move between the projects and not drive, but they obviously can drive. The other thing I want to point out is that North Ridge is supposed, is going to have a traffic light. They'll eventually trigger a traffic light, so making sure that there's vehicular connectivity so folks can get to a traffic light, as well as a pleasant bike, bike ped trek when, if you want to go over to the commercial. So that's what we were trying to achieve between the three projects. As you can see, the three projects here lined up side by side.
So Barbara, since you have them lined up side by side, I have a question. So I know you're not connecting to North Ridge to the south, but would there eventually be a connection to the west?
So what you see here is, it's kind of hard to see just the way it's shaded, but there's, there is a reverse frontage road, a parallel road that goes between all three of these projects. So the connection will be via this parallel road. This parallel road.
So that-
That's right here.
That's the commercial part of North Ridge that it's connecting to, is that what?
Yes, correct, correct.
And that connection will eventually connect to North Ridge's north-south road, whatever that's called?
Both of theirs, yes. So yeah, ultimately there'll be that kind of, the connectivity between all of these parcels. It just doesn't happen to the south. It happens through this boulevard effect that we put together between the three projects. And if you could just quickly put up the Sun Coast Village, you've got to give them both their time, because they're both proud of their projects, as they should be. I would say, I would let you know that these three projects together, not considering their commercial, because we don't know exactly what that build-out will be, but they are going to generate seven point eight million dollars of mobility fees. So we go from an area that didn't have water and sewer to an area that's now generating tax dollars and mobility fees. Is it the other one for Sun Coast Village? Sorry, Liam? Can't believe Liam's leaving us. Kind of. So again, this project, what we're showing here is what's going on. This was the Sun Coast Village project that put this together, what's going on in context around. This project is, both these projects are surrounded by North Ridge on the south. Again, this is a representation of the projects put together. And you can see it a little bit better here, David, how the connectivity goes through the three projects. And this is Sun Coast Village's plan. And I think it was alluded to, this project came in with a commercial component as well as a residential component. And when we put them together, just didn't seem like having so much commercial was as much of a benefit to these three projects coordinating as having more green space and open space so that, and these roads are private but going to be open so that people can go back and forth through the projects. And so this client was willing to give up their commercial and put it into open space, green space, which is pretty unusual as well. So that is the history of these projects. I'm not sure what the comment will be, so I'm, but I wanted to make sure you had a good idea of, you know, what we've done here, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Barbara, appreciate it. All right, and I think there's someone who wanted to speak. Come forward. You state your name and address and you've been sworn?
I was not sworn.
I didn't think so.
That was the first thing I was going to say.
I thought I was going to catch you.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give as the truth, so help you God?
I do, thank you. Pastor John Kerwak, Shady Hills Mission Chapel, one-five-nine-two-five Green Glen Lane, Spring Hill, Florida. And the things that I, I mean, and I'm happy, however you want to work this, you want me to go sit down and come back up or whatever, I mean, it seems like these are all together and-
You can speak to all three. We opened up the public hearing for all three of them.
Excellent, thank you. So some of the concerns that I had as I was reading through the things and because I have over the last three years seen where there is a hope for something to happen, kind of, you know, Shady Hills Road being expanded, being one of my big priorities for our community, but, you know, to see that transportation needs twenty forty-five, not having any timeline from FDOT is significantly concerning to me. Additionally, most recently with the increase of flow of traffic, not just in Pasco, as those before me have mentioned, that, you know, there's a lot going on in the north side. Most of those are single-family developments and I did hear the townhome comments, so maybe that's something that I haven't seen yet. I don't know. But most importantly, there are things that I saw such as I went through the memos and everything that was written up. You know, the bus stop on County Line Road is a big concern. We've had several incidents over the last, just even the last several weeks where we've had individuals that have been trying to cross, that have been unfortunately, you know, killed as a result of trying to cross that road. It's increasing, it's two-lane, you know, there are a lot of concerns. I'm not opposed, again, I'll say it, and I just would like to know whether or not any affordable housing or if this is a project that's considered or will be working towards a product that is affordable housing as a significant concern of mine, especially with regards to the community. Additionally, I did want to point out, I noticed that the sheriff did respond, the sheriff's office back in July of last year, just not having enough resources, needing additional tax dollars, specifically to reiterate, the Pasco Sheriff's Office is not anti-growth, but any rezoning, especially rezoning from commercial or ag to residential must be weighed with the opportunity loss for commercial or ag development and the impact on our community through crime and other impacts such as those being, you know, unfortunately meeting their demise trying to cross the road. And I think of the kids that are going to have to wait and we're still waiting for, you know, proper bus stops and things like that in Shady Hills Road. So at any rate, I just, you know, these are the major concerns. We're sixty-third out of sixty-seven. I mean, the sheriff has responded to the comp plan amendment. So, you know, these are my concerns, these are the concerns of Shady Hills. It does impact Shady Hills, the roads, whether or not they were originally developed in a way that can accommodate the trucks and all that's happening and all the throughway that will probably come down Shady Hills Road. So I know I'm over my time.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions?
I do have a question for staff.
Thank you very much.
Do we know why the sheriff commented on the comp plan but then issued no comments on the two rezonings? I mean, they're effectively the same approvals. I'm just curious as to why he raised these concerns with the comp plan but then didn't raise similar concerns with the rezonings.
Nictario Espitos, Plan Development Economic Growth. I can't speak specifically for the sheriff's office. I don't know the exact answer, but my guess is that they were commenting on the density question through the comp plan.
Yeah, I mean, my only comment is if you, if staff knows that that's what the sheriff's thought is in the rezoning agenda memos, he probably should say, however, he did comment on the related comp plan amendment. I mean, because it, it looks odd when you say the sheriff's office had no comments to the rezonings if in fact we know we had a concern that was raised in the associated plan amendment.
We can make that edit. It's probably moving as a package of the system, but we can be redundant in each of those memos.
All right, thank you, Terry. Anything else?
Just one quick question for staff. I appreciate the connectivity between all three MPUDs. Just mechanically, how does one assure that the east-west alignment of that interconnection happens at the same depth back from the right-of-way? So in other words, they're not going to come in for site plan approval with one comprehensive site plan, it'll end up being three different development plan approvals. So how do they, how do you assure that that road gets aligned in the same place?
So there is a standard MPD condition that requires them to coordinate. I think it's condition nineteen in the, I don't remember the numbers on each of them, but they all have a coordination requirement that they have to follow.
And Barbara Willhite, I would add, North Ridge is ahead and so North Ridge ultimately set the line. And then these projects, when you see those plans, they plan to the, to North Ridge's line because North Ridge is ahead. So that's just interesting how it's played out, but, you know, they set to the North Ridge line.
Got it.
All right, anything else? Nobody's on a webex, you said?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Barbara, did you want to offer any additional rebuttal?
So if not, if no more questions?
I just wanted to thank Barbara for shepherding those three together. That's great, appreciate that.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Do it one at a time.
Well, you should do them one at a time. My only thing I'm going to caution staff on is if you're going to change the name of this binding whatever plan to something midstream, please make sure you're catching it at every location because that term binding concept plan is used in many documents. So I'm not a big fan of you changing things midstream because that's how things get missed. But if you insist on doing that, over my objection, you better make sure you're catching it in every spot. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve PC twelve.
You need to do, oh.
We're doing them individually, so I'll second that?
Second, Jamie.
Any further discussion on the number twelve? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like signs? Okay, do you have a motion on number thirteen, PC thirteen?
So moved? With David's warning?
And the sheriff's office-
Stern warning.
That's right.
Okay, everybody's afraid to second it.
Second. I second.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And PC fourteen?
Motion to approve PC fourteen.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if we are able to move to item number seventeen on the agenda, it is a presentation of Resilient Pasco Project, the Resiliency and Sustainability Action Plan.
All right.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commission members, Amanda Hill, Planning Development and Economic Growth staff. I'll be presenting today on PC seventeen, file number PDE twenty-five dash zero-one-one-zero, along with Sean Lahav, who represents the consulting firm that was hired to provide services for this project.
Thank you.
The county received a planning grant in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. These were community development block grant mitigation funds and the grant is administered by the Florida Department of Commerce. There are three main parts of this project, the development of a living shorelines plan, the completion of a vulnerability assessment, and the development of a resilience and sustainability action plan. Like I mentioned, Half Associates was hired as the prime consultant on this project and there was also additional technical assistance provided by Fernleaf and Taylor Engineering. Project activities began in September of twenty twenty-three. In March of twenty twenty-four, the Living Shorelines Plan was completed. In June of twenty twenty-four, the countywide vulnerability assessment was completed and we are currently completing the Resilience and Sustainability Action Plan that's anticipated to be completed by April of twenty twenty-five. I am now going to pass it over to Sean so that he can provide us with some insights into the vulnerability assessment and the resilience and sustainability action plan.
All right, thank you.
Hey, good afternoon, commissioners. Really appreciate the opportunity to present to you today. My name is Sean Lahav. I'm Half's National Resilience Market Leader. I've served as the consultant project manager on this project since twenty twenty-three and we're almost wrapping up. To get started today, want to highlight some findings and insights from the risk and vulnerability assessment. This is a very extensive process, so this is a summary level overview of what was found. As part of the vulnerability assessment, we looked at current and future tidal flooding, storm surge, sea level rise, extreme rainfall, and compound flooding. Regarding the tidal flooding and storm surge flooding findings, which is very prevalent given the amount of hurricanes that have passed through this area of Florida over the past two years, it was very interesting to note that less than five percent of Pasco County overall was exposed to these conditions. But then when we broke it down into the west market area, I'll show you a map in a few seconds, between sixteen to fifty-five percent of the west market area was exposed to tidal flooding and storm surge conditions across different scenarios, and I'll highlight that in a second. So one of the important questions, why did we conduct this vulnerability assessment to begin with? In twenty twenty-one, the state legislature established the Resilient Florida Program and passed section three eighty point zero-nine-three Florida statutes. The statutory requirements requires that every municipality and county in the state of Florida conduct a flood vulnerability assessment to remain eligible for infrastructure funding from the state. So we went ahead and engaged in that process, but Pasco County wanted to make it a much more detailed vulnerability assessment beyond the minimum requirements. Looking at additional key insights, we evaluated the vulnerabilities of different critical infrastructure asset types. There's four asset classes within the statutes, transportation and evacuation routes, primarily looking at roadways like US nineteen as an economic corridor, then looking at critical infrastructure assets, water, wastewater treatment plants, lift stations, pump stations, critical community and emergency facilities, looking at police stations, fire stations, the building we're standing in, and then natural, cultural, and historical assets. Looking at the storm surge scenarios across current conditions and then through the future into twenty fifty into twenty eighty, up to twenty percent of critical infrastructure assets in the county were identified as being vulnerable solely through the mapping. So what plays out in reality or different storm events will be different, but the mapping and the vulnerability assessment identified up to twenty percent of those assets. Then looking at tidal flooding, commonly referred to as nuisance flooding or sunny day flooding, doesn't have to be associated with the storm, up to ten percent of transportation and evacuation routes within Pasco County were identified as being affected. We also looked at compound flooding, which is an emerging topic across the state of Florida, looking at the correlation between riverine flooding, storm surge, and rainfall within a three-day period. So if a storm comes in and the water levels are already high, what will be the impacts from that event? And then two final factors, looking at extreme rainfall, there are NASA projections and projections from the Florida Institute of Technology or FIU down in South Florida. And there was projected to be an increase in rainfall across the county. This is hard or difficult to model, but we did our best to kind of identify what are those change factors. And then finally, this was not a required component of the statutory requirements, but as part of the Resilient Pasco Project, we also looked at extreme heat vulnerability, looking at the urban heat island effect primarily in the west market area and then in Zephyr Hills and Date City. So going back to what I was maintaining about the west market area versus Pasco County, so not every area of Pasco County, particularly inland areas, are vulnerable to tidal flooding or storm surge. Rainfall is spread throughout the county. But looking at the one-hundred-year or one percent annual chance storm surge conditions, the first map shows current conditions, so what would happen during a one-hundred-year event under the present times? And then in accordance with the statutory requirements, we looked at the intermediate-high worst-case scenario, sea level rise scenario. And in twenty forty and twenty seventy, if those projections prove true, you would see those tidal and storm surge conditions move further inland. There's a lot of detailed maps, part of the vulnerability assessment, that maps out all of your critical infrastructure assets. As Amanda previously mentioned, beyond the vulnerability assessment, there was a lot of other components of this project that tied into a living shorelines plan and then a resilience and sustainability action plan. As part of the resilience and sustainability action plan, once the vulnerability assessment was completed, we consulted a wide range of references to inform the methodology. The Florida Adaptation Guidebook was published by FDEP in NOAA in twenty eighteen. This has a wide range of resources. We also looked at national industry best practices. The federal government maintains the U.S. Climate Resilience Toolkit that assists communities with navigating these challenges. We also wanted to provide context of what other local governments across Florida and the country are doing, so we looked at Pinellas County and other municipalities and counties across the state through case studies. Community engagement was perhaps the most important part of this project. Back in June of last year, over the summer, we facilitated four community engagement events all across Pasco County and then also engaged special interest groups in the business and emergency management communities. and then also engaged special interest groups in the business and emergency management communities. And then finally, looking at county priorities, throughout this process, one of our chief objectives from the county and from the consultant side was to align this project with existing planning initiatives. That included the Pasco 2050 Comprehensive Plan Update, the 2025 to 2030 Strategic Plan, and then the Stormwater Management Master Plan, so trying to align all of those efforts in harmony. In closing this presentation, have a few more slides or several more slides just talking about the structure of the Resilience and Sustainability Action Plan. This is essentially the implementation roadmap of all of the issues we identified. But beyond the issues related to flooding, storm surge, Pasco County also set forth a vision to look at sustainability, looking at water resource management, walkability, all of these different things. The way the RSAP, the Resilience and Sustainability Action Plan, is organized, there's five themes structuring the document. Then within those themes, there are respective goals or broader objectives. There's 32 goals. And then there are 93 action items in total to guide Pasco County over the next five, 10, even 20 or 30 years. As part of each action item, we looked at the timeframe, so what is the time associated with implementing the action, the relative cost, department champions across Pasco County, potential partners, looking at state agencies, universities, Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, and then implementation pathways, who has to be responsible for this at the county perspective. Very briefly, just want to touch on each of the themes that were addressed in the RSAP. Theme one is focused on protecting neighborhoods. The question here is how do we minimize exposure to flooding where possible and reduce impacts to life, property, and infrastructure where unavoidable? And you can see all of the different action items that were included here. The second theme was adaptable and transparent government. This recognizes the need to be more communicative about current and future threats to Pasco County's way of life and what the county is currently doing and doing in the future to address that. Then responsible resource management. This is focused on water, energy, waste, and land resource management. The fourth theme is healthy and connected communities. This theme focuses on mobility opportunities, food, infill development, and extreme heat or reducing extreme heat to support walkable and connected communities. And then finally, targeted economic and cultural development, which is especially important in the aftermath of COVID and a lot of the things that the United States has experienced over the past few years. This focuses on economic resilience through workforce development in emerging industries, supporting local food production and distribution, network distribution, and supporting arts and culture across the local community in Pasco County and across each of your municipalities. Before passing it off to Amanda for next steps, just want to say that it's been a pleasure to work with Pasco County on this project. This has been one of the most innovative resilience and sustainability projects that we've seen to date in the state of Florida. It really went the extra mile, and we're excited to see how this will impact future planning decisions and decisions at the Board of County Commissioners level. I'm going to pass it back to Amanda to talk about next.
Can you ask one question before you pass it back?
Yes, sir.
Can you go back to your slide that talks about the three different kinds of flooding areas? One of your first slides. Yeah, so you showed us a map of the storm surge areas in the next slide. Did you map the tidal flooding and compound flooding areas as well?
Yes.
Is that in your full report?
Yes, so there's a very extensive full report. We're talking about dozens of pages and more than 100 mapping products. The compound flooding model that was produced as part of this project shows compound flooding across the entire county considering rainfall. And then the tidal and storm surge maps are very detailed. There's also a geo database which planning staff can reference. You can drill down all the way to the site scale and look at very fine, detailed maps.
Was the tidal flooding map provided to our stormwater department?
That's a question that I would have to ask Amanda.
Amanda Hill, Planning, Development, Economic Growth. So the planning files from this project have been distributed across the county. The project manager for the stormwater master plan was actually one of the members of the Resilient Pasco Project team, so they have all the mapping that's associated with this project.
Do you hear that, Patrick? Thank you.
The solution to the ADU conversation?
We've been struggling with creating a map, so that's why I asked the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
And Amanda has just a final, final comment.
Thanks, Sean. Okay, so for next steps, we have begun collaborating with the Pasco 2050 Comprehensive Plan Team to integrate the policy recommendations within this document into the comprehensive plan. We are also planning to request adoption by resolution from the board. This would be on April 22nd. Apart from that, departments have begun executing the action items, whether it's through planning studies, data tracking, collaboration with potential partners, even construction projects in some cases, planning for those activities. And then to follow up on the question from Mr. Goldstein, in terms of implementation, this will be done by the Office of Strategy and Sustainability. So not only have the documents from the vulnerability assessment been transmitted to that department, we are also going to be transmitting the RSAP to them as well for further implementation. Any other questions or comments?
No, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Are we taking comments?
Yes.
Well, technically, this is a presentation item, but if you want to take public comment, that's up to the planning commission.
Hey, I read it, so.
I don't want to stifle anybody.
Barbara Willhite, 86, 27. I just want to make sure you guys have read this, right? I had insomnia last night. I was preparing for all those items, so I read this. So I at first thought, okay, I thought I knew what it would be. I get the heat, I get the tidal, I get the flooding, but I hope you know how far and reaching this study plan goes. There was talk about TOD and transit hubs. I didn't even know we had such things as a transit hub. Vertically integrated mixed use, garbage pickup, agricultural reserves, ecological planning units, rural and family lands protection for Northeast Pasco, solar panels on commercial buildings, EV charging stations, composting, infill development. And then I fell back asleep. So I just want, what it sounds like it is, it's a lot more than that. It's very, very detailed, and I would hope that it gets the attention of if it's going to set policy direction, that somebody realizes it's a lot more than just the things that you would think that resiliency is about. And I did hear when they opened up, they said that they went, this county went way beyond what most counties do with these, with this grant and this project. So just want to point that out because I had read it. I thought it was interesting.
So Barbara, I mean, I guess my thought on that is that it's not really regulatory unless it's integrated into the Complan or Land Development Code.
Okay.
That's what the second bullet is.
Right, I mean, which begs the question of why are we adopting it by resolution? I don't.
I would think you, if I was back in my day, I would be accepted and, you know, received and filed.
So I guess I'll ask staff, what is the intent of adopting it by resolution? If it's not regulatory until it's included in the Complan, which is regulatory, or Land Development Code, which is regulatory, what's the intent of adopting it by resolution?
To answer that question, from my experience looking at other communities, it has been beneficial in terms of acquiring funding if you have an adopted resolution saying that this plan has been adopted by the board. So that would be the benefit of doing that adoption by resolution.
So it's to assist with funding?
Correct, for resilience planning efforts.
Well, the only thing I would ask is I don't know who's doing, which department is doing this resolution? Which, which kind of department is doing the resolution?
I'm Planning, Development, Economic Growth.
Yeah, I mean, you probably need to include a statement in the resolution just saying it's not regulatory. So we're not, I mean, I understand Barbara's concern. Her concern is if it's going to be a regulatory document, that's a different level of scrutiny that we would normally do to something than if it's not. So if it's only for purposes of funding, that's fine, but we probably need a statement there saying it's not regulatory except to the extent it's integrated into the Complan or LDC.
Noted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So what we're recommending is that if we make a motion to approve it, it would be.
Well, to be clear, you don't have to make a motion on this.
Yeah, presentation.
It was a presentation item, so you don't have to do anything with it. I'm just. Barbara, I think Barbara raises a legitimate concern, which is she's worried that somehow this is going to be construed as regulatory, which I don't think that's staff's intent from what I'm hearing. They just need to make that clear in the resolution.
Noted.
Require any action?
It does not require any action.
Okay.
The next item on the list is item PC 15, which is the Proposed Tree Preservation Ordinance by Patrick Dutter.
By the way, this is regulatory.
All right. Good afternoon. Patrick Dutter, Planning, Development, Economic Growth. All right, long time coming. Tree ordinance update. I think it was questioned by the board. I don't know, probably close to a year ago now. So some updated language to 802. So first, I want to talk about the exemption adjustments. So there are a lot of pieces to this. You know, we were tasked with looking at, you know, a lot of clear cutting going on. There was concern about why are we clear cutting every tree, if we could keep some of the larger trees somehow. So that kind of opened up this code section, and then the team wanted to clean up some items while they were there, some loopholes that we kind of discovered throughout the years. So since we had 800 open, we wanted to take that advantage. So that's why you see some adjustments to some stuff you might not be expecting. So the first is exemption adjustments. We removed the exemption of getting a permit to install a fence or a wall, removed the exemption of getting a permit for the creation of a survey. We allow for the removal of high-risk trees on residential lots without a permit. There is state statute language that was adopted, I think, a year and a half ago that's required us to have that language in our code. And remove the exemption to remove small tree, or trees smaller than five-inch DBH on residential lots. This is already implied with the introduction piece in the exemption, so some cleanup items there.
Explain a couple of things.
Yes.
Remove the exemption of getting a permit to install a fence or wall.
Sure.
So what's the implication of that?
So I think we saw, and I have Mike Woodard here, he is our arborist working in central permitting. He deals with every single tree application that you come in. I believe there it was, people, I think, were taking advantage of that by saying they were going to have a tree or fence or a wall, and we don't really have permits for that. So people were using that to say, I'm going to take down this tree because I'm going to put up a tree or fence or wall. Now, we're not restricting anyone from doing that. You just got to get a permit first.
So how does that save a tree?
Well, it doesn't save a tree, but it just, it gets rid of the loophole where they didn't have to get a permit.
To what end? I guess what I'm asking, is it a fee-raising exercise? The goal of an ordinance is to save the trees. If it doesn't save the trees, then why are we doing it?
I can answer that. Mike Woodard, Pasco County Arborist. The biggest issue was coming from natural resources not being able to review fences being placed possibly in a wetland. So we're not saying no, it's just for natural resources to review for wetlands and for us to make sure that it is on the property line and not just a random fence across a backyard. We were getting people doing that and clearing out quite a number of trees that aren't for a property.
Okay, so I got a big backyard, agricultural property. I want to get a horse or a cow. Are you telling me I can't cross fence my yard to create paddocks for the livestock?
Right now, the exemption's only for delineating a property line. So for agricultural properties, people put in fences anyway, and they basically have to go around the tree. Since it's in your property, you could go around to say a grand oak that would require a permit, and that's what we would ask people to do.
Okay. And then just the follow-up to my question, same thing with getting a, creating a survey?
Right now, code allows trimming to proper pruning standards to be able to access a site to do any surveys of trees. I've encountered one person who had a really odd, the tree came up about five feet and then crossed horizontally across the property, and they couldn't bring a truck in to survey. And that's the only one I've encountered where people couldn't work around the trees. And they did come to us and ask how they would do that first, and we worked with them on it.
So if, are you saying a surveyor needs to get a permit to conduct a survey?
No, to remove a tree to conduct a survey, because they shouldn't need to. They can work around the trees generally to see what a site is. I've done it myself, and I have never had to remove.
And then the exemption on five-inch DBH trees on residential lots?
That issue, did you want to speak to that or you want me to?
Yeah, I can answer that. So if you read the intro to the exemptions piece, it says a tree removal permit is required for the removal of all five-inch diameter of breast height except for the following circumstances, in that it's saying five-inch or greater. It's implying that anything less than that doesn't need a permit.
Right, so you're saying it needs a permit to take something out that's less than five inches?
No, you don't have to have that permit.
Only if it's five inches or more.
Five inches or more.
What are high-risk trees, Patrick?
High-risk trees? Mike?
So that statute, Florida Statute 163.045, requests that an arborist writing an arborist letter to exempt from permitting certify that the tree cannot be mitigated below a moderate risk as determined by a basic risk assessment. They don't have to do a full risk assessment, a basic risk assessment of that tree. If they can certify that, then they don't need a permit to remove the tree, and that's what that exemption speaks to.
I'm not sure. It's still not clear, quite clear to me. Is it clear to everybody else?
No.
So maybe you could dumb it down a little bit.
When a new development is created, they have trees that they have to place on their lot. They're all going to be about two or three-inch caliber. Many phone calls I get after people move into those subdivisions is they read our code and go, oh, it's less than five inches. I don't need a permit, correct? But it was part of an approved plan for their home, and that's a discrepancy we're trying to get clear for people.
I don't think that's what the chair is asking about. He's asking about the high-risk tree removal in the statute. I think that's what.
Oh, the statute states we cannot require a permit if they possess that letter and it meets the state law's requirements. We also cannot require a.
To make it clear, what is the term the statute uses? You're, you're calling them high-risk trees, but does the statute use that exact term?
Yes.
It does.
Does the statute define what a high-risk tree is?
Yes, as defined by the basic.
And what is that?
It is an ISA document and a methodology from the International Society of Arborists to determine the risk of a tree as relating to human infrastructure.
But what is the, so you asked a question right before that, but what is the, what is classified as a high-risk tree?
What makes for a high-risk tree?
It's somewhat situationally dependent, but you have to have a target nearby, like a home or a car, people walking by even. So you have to have something that can be damaged, and you have to have an issue with the tree that you can't trim or do any sort of mitigation to, like a dying tree, for example, near a home, is a high risk because you cannot resolve the issue. But a one branch over the home can be trimmed to remove that level of risk, and that's what that risk assessment is supposed to determine.
And you're, you're saying that's determined by an arborist? It's not a full.
An ISA certified arborist.
Okay, so it's not a full risk assessment, but it's a.
It's a basic risk assessment, which is not so basic. There's quite a lot of criteria they look at. They look at, like I said, the targets, what's there, what's not there, the condition of the tree, the species of tree, and the location it is. So there's a lot of leeway for argument in it as well.
So it's not really what kind of tree it is or what the diameter of the tree is, it's other issues.
Yes, the specific condition of that individual tree, yes.
Okay.
Mike, I've got a question for you before you go down. It's to go back to that exemption on the the slide here says remove exemption of getting a permit for the creation of a survey. But the, I think that the section of the code that's stricken is not just a survey, it's geotechnical tests, anything else. So in order for geotechnical tests to be done, we got to get a surveyor out there to survey the trees and then submit a permit to remove a tree that's in their way to get the drill rig in there to do the test. Is that right?
Possibly, but I don't get very many requests for that.
Well, now you don't because they're exempt.
Because it's exempt.
I mean.
I don't get people calling to ask about it either very often.
Look, because they know. It's written in the code. That's the way it's always been. I mean, that's going to create quite the delay on.
I mean, I can tell you, I have had multiple sites where we've had to go in and clear trees for the purpose of getting a drill rig onto a site that's that densely forested. That's not uncommon.
We do it all the time.
Correct.
And question for you all, how often are those trees, something that would need a permit? We tend to have a lot of invasive trees, the palms and pines we don't require permitting for.
Well, I mean, again, if it's stricken here, then all of a sudden, what kind of Pandora's box do we open up? Hey, that tree was eight inches, or that tree was six inches, or that tree was four inches, or, I mean, that exemption's present now, and all. I mean, that exemption's present now and all the people I've worked with, all are careful. And we usually walk the site with them to make sure that care is taken and we carefully choose the route that they get there. We're not going through a 24-inch tree to get a rig in there.
Yeah, by practice, we typically try to use five inches or, you know, above as kind of, so we're not going to touch anything that's above five inches. But, so we try to wind our path through it, but yeah, that's a very good point.
Okay, so maybe modify that language to bring back the piece about professional geologists, geotechnical stuff.
Patrick, let me ask a question about these.
Sure.
I didn't hear the board getting upset about geotechnical engineering companies removing some five-inch trees to do geotechnical explorations. And I didn't hear the board screaming that we're losing all the trees in the county because Mr. Gray decided to put, or Mr. Moody decided to put up a fence along his property line. The issue is developments that result in the clear cutting of trees.
Sure.
And this seems like, at least this portion, and I know you haven't finished this, this doesn't solve clear cutting problems of developments. This just makes more bureaucracy for a homeowner or a geotechnical engineer or a surveyor.
Sure.
And we're talking about small amounts of trees. And a lot of times, just like the gentleman said, nuisance trees and exotics. And I'm just not understanding why we're going to this level. This doesn't seem to address the issue.
Sure. And I think we attempt to address the main issue further along in the PowerPoint presentation, which we can talk about. I think these were smaller cleanup things that danced around the subject and maybe things that we could improve to make even the smaller projects a little bit better to keep some of our trees. But ultimately, if it's something that we want to just keep the language as is and just focus on the large development stuff, that's something we can do, assuming the board is, that's what the board wants, I guess. Would you like me to keep going through the?
Yeah.
Okay, new development adjustments. Removal requirements at tree survey, we will continue to allow representative sampling. We added clarity what the tree survey entails. For the tree inventory, we added clarity to what the tree inventory entails as well. So oftentimes, and the engineers that are here, I don't have the issue with, but some other engineers provide us tree surveys and tree inventories that are not very clear. So we're just provided some additional direction about what we want to see on the tree survey and tree inventory. In terms of retention and replacement requirements, nothing's really changing there. Still need a tree plan. You need to include the replacement calculations showing how trees will be planted equal or above their removal amount. Projects can still, in deficit, can still pay into the tree mitigation fund. I have that covered in another slide. So like, if you review the redline text, it looks like a lot, but a lot of the stuff is cleanup and clarification stuff or just shifting how the code section reads a little bit. Problem trees and tree protection. Cleaned up and expanded on the existing problem tree section. Expanded on removal criteria and added the requirement for replacement plantings. So we have basically, you're removing tree, or you have problem trees on basically non-residential lots and then everything other than that. So we have basically two separate sections that talk about if you're removing a tree on a residential lot, this is the stuff you need to provide us. Again, just adding some more clarity about what we're looking for. We did the same thing on non-residential. Most of that language still existed previous to this. We just cleaned up some of that language and formatted it a little bit better just to make it read a little more clear. All right, so this will be a fun one. Tree mitigation fund. So the current code, currently, for residential development, you have to pay, if you're removing trees, right, and you have a deficit, $50 per inch, not to exceed $500 per unit. For affordable housing projects, it's $10 per inch, not to exceed $50 per unit. For non-residential with a building, it's $50 per inch, not to exceed $500 for each 2,000 square foot of the first floor. And then for non-residential with no building, it's $50 per inch. So that's what the current code has. Their proposed code is an attempt to kind of simplify that a little bit. We're not really breaking it up by residential or commercial. We're going by how much land are you disturbing? And of that land that you're disturbing, how many trees you have on there? So all project types, it's going to be $70, $75 per inch. Also, all project types, it's going to be an additional $150 per inch for heritage trees. And I'll cover what a heritage tree is in a future slide, and Mike can probably help me out with that too. But that's generally larger oak trees and larger magnolia trees. So the larger oak trees and larger magnolia trees, you're paying, not $75, you're paying $150 per inch if you need to remove those trees. And then, of course, the in lieu of payment clause that we currently have, we're changing that a little bit too. Like I said, we're doing per disturbed acreage. So in lieu of payment per inch, it's going to be $2,750 per disturbed developable acreage until May 1st, 2026. And that amount is going to increase to $3,500 after 5/1/26.
So does that mean if the developer wants to pay $2,750, he can clear cut it, whatever trees he needs to clear cut?
Yes, if, whatever deficit they have, so between inches that they're going to replace and maybe, you know, they're going to, hopefully they're going to save some trees, but inches that they're going to replace, there's a number that they come up with. Well, okay, we're at a deficit of 5,000 inches. So it's going to be now by developable acreage.
And those inches, is that diameter in inches or around the tree?
DBH diameter.
So Patrick, you and I have had this conversation. I think the code needs more clarity about when, what projects these new fees are going to be applicable to. Not just for the initial change, but also for your change in, on 5/1/26. I didn't know you were changing it again on 5/1/26 until just now. So I think the timing of who pays these changed fees, I don't know if they're increases or not, but whatever they're, needs to be clearer in the code.
Right, and we have language that I'm about to read that I think should potentially solve that issue. So we have a lot of MPUDs that have conditions of approval that mention specific ordinance, the older ordinance, in terms of tree mitigation. And so we have some language that we want to read in that was not included in this original code to hopefully help with that. So resolution number 08-284 is hereby amended and superseded by this section 802.4. These mitigation rates shall be applicable to all applications for construction plans, operating permits, or mass grading plan that is not complete prior to the effective date of the 2025 amendment to this section. So that's added language.
Yeah, I just think you're going to have to add similar, a similar trigger for this increase on 5/1/26.
Sure.
You need to add some language to that to say, what projects are going to have to pay the increase rate on 5/1/26.
Understood.
So that's application complete or application submitted?
What, specifically, which piece?
Trigger is the new fees.
It's going to be application submitted. So if you have your, if you have your application submitted, you're covered by whatever you were under at that time. If we take a year to approve it, you're still subject to the previous, whatever you were approved under, or submitted.
So, and the date, the operative date would be the date that the disordinance takes effect, which presumably would be when? If you're on schedule, current schedule?
I do not know the final hearing date off the top of my head. But I would obviously include that.
Okay.
Okay, so here's a comparison chart. Hopefully you guys can see it on your screen there. I know it's a little small for us here. So I took 10 or 15 projects to show you what these new changes would look like. Now, these projects, what they decided to do was pay by inch, right? So what I did is I took those projects and then rather than the $50 per inch, I changed it to $75 per inch. Now, I understand, the caveat to this is I did not go through every single one of these projects and figure out which ones of these were heritage trees, right? Because that number is obviously increased when, assuming you have heritage trees. So the numbers on the right are the increases or potentially decreases. And like I said, it is not including the heritage trees. What's probably a little bit more telling is the next comparison chart. So this is the, what I like to say, the in lieu of comparison chart. So previously, you know, you can do $50 per inch or you could pay $500 per residential lot, that type of thing, right? So that's what this is. So the, those are again, 10, 12 projects. The first column is in lieu of payment, so that is actually what they paid. And then what I went to do is I found the developable acreage for all of these projects and multiplied that by our new rate. So you can see generally the increases that you're going to see for the 2,750 number and then the 3,500 number. The observation that I think I've made with this is usually your more compact developments are not paying as much in tree mitigation. Your projects that are more sprawling are paying more in tree mitigation. Obviously, that makes sense because now we're triggering based off of developable acreage. So like at residential subdivisions that have large lots sprawling, as you can see, some of them, they're paying double, if not more, in tree mitigation. So that's just a comparison chart. So we also clarified tree mitigation fund usage. So we clarified what constitutes an affordable housing use, added, I think, the 80% AMI. Clarified the use for the economic growth commercial landscaping program to make that clear. Added the ability for the county administrator to use the tree mitigation funds for public use. So as an example, like Arbor Day or Tree Day, if we want to do programs where people can come and get trees from the county for free, we can use that funding for that or any other types of similar uses. And then added a cap on the amount of the funds that the county can use for non-vegetative costs. So oftentimes, the county will come in and try and use funds for the tree mitigation fund, which is great. That's probably how we got a lot of landscaping in some of our medians. But the county wanted to use some of those funds for, other than just landscaping, like mulch and all that kind of stuff. We're really focused on trees. So we put a cap in there that, okay, they can use some of the funds, but it can't exceed a certain amount.
So just to clarify the third one, Patrick, that's still for purposes of planting trees?
Correct.
It's not, I mean, we're not using this fund to build roads or?
No, correct.
Okay, because it says public, you may want to clarify that because that makes it sound like we can use the money for any public purpose. That doesn't sound very good.
Okay.
You might have to make it clear that it's.
It may be in here, I just.
The planting of trees for some public purposes, that makes some sense, but I.
Sure.
But I think public purpose is a little too broad.
Right. It may be clearly in here. I just probably generalized it for the slide, but I will go back and check to make sure.
I need to fix your slide.
Sure.
Because that's too broad.
Understood.
Okay.
Can you remind me what the second one is? What is the economic growth commercial landscaping program?
Yeah, so I believe three or four years ago at this point, the Economic Growth Group developed a program to help incentivize maybe some rundown-looking development or commercial development to, you know, install landscaping along their frontages. So funding used for the tree mitigation fund is used for those purposes.
Is that something, so maybe there's a business out there that was, you know, done way before there was a landscaping, whatever, do they apply for a grant or how does that work?
Yes, I believe, and Mr. Engel, I think, was the expert there. But I believe they will apply for the grant funding and assume they meet certain criteria. Funding will be released for them to make those improvements.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to the first bullet. I noticed that you got rid of the reduced rate for affordable housing projects. Is the theory that, because you'll just give them now the grants from the fund directly if they're below 80% of AMI, so they don't need a reduced rate?
No, honestly, the thinking there was, at the time, we don't think affordable housing projects should not have any less trees than anyone else, I think was the thinking.
I get that. What I'm asking is, since they may still struggle to put them all in, it sounds like you're building in the ability to, that they can request funds from the tree mitigation fund?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so then our heritage tree. Heritage trees shall have a condition rating of good or better as determined by the ISA condition rating system. Tree species as stated below must be at the required DBH or greater to qualify for a heritage tree. Every effort must be made to incorporate heritage trees into the design of the project. So our live oaks that are larger than 34 inches DBH and magnolia trees that are 24 inches or larger than DBH.
Does that mean every effort must be made to incorporate heritage trees into the design of a project? What's every effort?
Try your best.
Well, who decides whether I've tried my best or not? Who's judge and jury?
If you would like, we could strike that language.
Well, you guys proposed the ordinance, so I'm asking the question.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot of aspirational stuff that we have in the code. And I think that's probably one of them.
Okay, I'll just leave it at that for the moment.
Sure. Questions?
Well, I'm just concerned about the payment of $2,500 and then you can clear any tree you want, you know, basically. I don't know, I'm not, I don't like them taking down heritage trees, period.
Sure.
And I think sometimes it's better to not have all straight roads. You know, you can go around things. And if you think you can sell a lot for $50,000, paying $3,000 to cut down a heritage oak is a pretty reasonable sacrifice.
That's my problem with this, Mr. Gray, is we're increasing the fee by $25 an inch. If I'm, just by way of example, for a 30-inch tree, that's not a heritage tree. Actually, we'll make it a 33-inch tree because that doesn't qualify as a heritage oak tree. It costs $825, all right? If I'm developing an MPUD on a 40-foot wide lot and that lot's worth $100,000 in market value, you think $825 is going to make me save that tree? I'm going to kill that tree every time. That is a economic decision that takes not even a fraction of a second to make. I won't be supporting this ordinance. Because I don't feel like, and for exactly this reason, that this is going to move the needle. What I see is, and back to my initial comment, I see more bureaucracy for the poor homeowner that needs to take down a five-and-a-half-inch dead tree in their yard. I don't see anything here that incentivizes a developer to save a tree. All we did was make the tree fund bigger and we already have an excess of money in the tree fund anyways. The commissioner's been talking about, we've had this tree fund and we haven't spent the money. There were some of us that were getting frustrated with the amount of clear cutting and tree removal that's going on. And the approach that was proposed was one of incentivization to save trees, not penalties. Because these penalties are meaningless in the scale of the value of a lot. One of the ideas floated was we have a density bonus in our comprehensive plan that allows a developer to get extra density by preserving a wetland. Well, I'm not going to tell you that you can't impact a wetland. People get permits to impact wetlands every day when there are reasons. But you don't get, this isn't 1972 where I can just go and take 20 acres of wetlands and dredge and fill them all to create a new subdivision. If I need to knock the corner of a wetland off to get a road around, yeah, I can get a permit to do that. a permit to do that. So my point is, I can't develop those wetlands anyways. So we give developers a bonus for preserving something that the state's gonna make and the federal government's gonna make them preserve anyway. So why do we even bother with that? Why don't we give them a bonus when you save trees? What I was hoping for when this discussion started was that this would come to us in the form of a comprehensive plan amendment and a change in how we do business at Pascal County. One, give the bonus for saving a percentage of tree canopy, not saving wetlands that I can't get permits to develop anyways. The other is more policy. We've had lots of discussions over the last few years about the minimum widths of lots. I think I was one of the first ones to say, I'm done with forty and fifty-foot wide lots. I think that was on the hail Collier thing and that started a big discussion about this. And then what happened was discussions with the TBBA and a policy memo that comes out that says you can have forty-five foot wide lots. So I'll propose this. How about when Barbara's client comes in for an MPUD, we start with R4 zoning. You start with sixty-foot wide lots. And when you save that wetland, then I'll give you fifty-eight foot wide lots. And when you save twenty-five percent of the trees, then I'll give you fifty-foot wide lots. And then when you give me two acres of neighborhood park, then I'll give you forty-five foot wide lots. Then we, the developers need to understand, you give, you get. We just give right from the front end and I think that's part of our problem. The other thing that this ordinance doesn't do, and, and I apologize, I don't want any of the staff to take my comments personally because I know that this ordinance was started under a previous ACA. Wasn't David Allen that started this? I think Roy Major did this, but we'd had discussions with Roy. We told Roy what our, what our thoughts were on this and what he chose was not the incentive basis, the, the regulatory. And I know you guys got stuck with this and you're trying to put it over the goal line and we understand you just doing your job. But it's not a program that I feel like is gonna move the needle. And we haven't done anything in our code. We have to look at why do developers clear? Developers don't just get up in the morning and say, I'm gonna clear cut the trees. It starts with the stormwater design. I have to start from the lowest place and then everything goes uphill from there. Every one of our sites, and I hear the commissioners complaining about it, they're wondering, why are these developments four and five and seven feet higher than their neighbors? Well, that's because water flows downhill and we can only, we, we start with the bottom and we, we work our way up. Unfortunately, you can't change the code to stop those things or we're going to flood people, but that's why these things get clear cut. But I can tell you that twenty-five dollars an inch, the only guy that that might discourage is my neighbor. The only thing that he's gonna get discouraged about is going down to actually legally get a permit. He's gonna cut the tree down on Saturday afternoon and we'll make it disappear in the bonfire Saturday night. You'll never know. It's not homeowners that are the issue. So I don't feel like there's any need other than if we wanna make some minor tweaks or corrections in the existing ordinance to clarify things, but until you get something that's actually gonna incentivize a developer to do, to, to save trees and a new way of doing business, it's not gonna work.
And Patrick, that's, that's really the thing that's bothered me too, is that, you know, I think the problem, as you said, is, is not the homeowners, it's the developers. Because they're the only ones that go in and clear cut.
Sure.
And, uh, and it just, every time I drive down a little road past that one area and see all of that area clear cut, um, that was forest, you know, you can't imagine how many calls I've gotten about that. And, uh, so I think that's really the, what should be our focus is to find a way, practical way to put, put developers in a position where it's not economically attractive to cut down. I mean, a thirty-four foot oak, a thirty-four inch oak, I mean, that's, that's a pretty big oak, you know? A thirty-three inch is still a pretty big oak, you know? So, um, you know, I think, uh, maybe, you know, that number should be decreased too. It should be a smaller oak should even be because it takes so long to grow.
I, and I, I get it. I just don't think, unless you're gonna start charging them thousands of dollars an inch, and then at some point, we're going to make development impractical if you have a wooded site. But I feel like if we do it the opposite way, rather than, we want carrots, not sticks.
True.
Then I feel like there'll be a lot more creativity. What, if, if my goal is to get forty-five foot wide lots, I'll figure out how to cluster my development so I can save part of that tree canopy. And again, we're giving away density for property that can't be developed in the first place. That, there was a time, I was a very young child at the time, where you could walk, where you could go in and blitz a wetland and do that kinda stuff and you didn't need permits.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah, and then there was a time when you could go do that and the penalty for doing it was ten thousand dollars. Well, okay, here's the ten grand, I'll write the check and I'll go fill the well and now it's ten thousand a day and that stops people from doing it.
So I do wanna comment on one thing though. So I'm not opposed to your idea, but I will say that I'm, I have some concerns about taking away the wetland credit because that was put in place partially to avoid a taking. I mean, I understand that you, from a practical standpoint, you're saying it doesn't really achieve a whole lot, but it still shows that we're giving some value for those wetlands.
Okay.
It may be a value that, that most developers don't really care about, but on the books, you're getting some value for that land that if we don't give value for that land, arguably we've, we've given no value.
Okay.
And so now you arguably have a taking of that property.
And why can't we give them a density incentive for preserving trees over a certain size or a certain percentage of canopy?
Yeah, so I, what I'm saying is I don't have an objection to you, that's giving other density incentives like you're saying, but I, I wouldn't wanna take away the wetland density.
I agree with that. I agree with that, David. Fair argument.
You know? Chris? I mean, several years ago, I heard him talk about conservation subdivisions and, and it was an idea like, okay, you preserve all this green space and you cluster your development. I'm not sure I've still today have seen one of those and maybe there are, but I'm not familiar with them, but I think your idea has merit.
Those were generally in the low density, like the rez one areas and they were intended for places like the northeast rural, more so than, you know, the west market area, the central.
But again, when I'm seeing development happening out in VOPH per se, I'm not seeing that, but I'd like, I think your idea has merit. I think that should be something we should consider because again, if you can preserve trees and, and green space and then cluster development, that, it, that makes sense to me.
So, so I have a question for staff. And Patrick, you and I have had this conversation. I mean, this ordinance has other gaps, like for example, it doesn't even codify PM twenty-six, which is odd to me because the MPUDs were imposing these tree requirements and landscape requirements through PM twenty-six, but apparently the rest of the county, if you're not an MPUD, you don't have to comply with those tree and landscape requirements. Would, seems like at some point, we should codify PM twenty-six. Is there going to be a part, is this just part one of the tree fix? And there's gonna be a part two where we do things like codify PM twenty-six and maybe put in density incentives for preser, I mean, I, I, I don't know if this is just the, the Band-Aid and then we're gonna do the cure later or what, but somebody help me out here?
Hi, David Engel, planning and economic development director. So I've been listening very carefully and I really appreciate Mr. Moody's discussion of the history and genesis of this effort because he's right. We had a very ambitious tree mitigation and, and tree preservation concept ordinance that we were proffering and the, we had tremendous pushback frankly, from the development community. Uh, the development community acknowledged that our fees haven't been increased for about twenty years and that they were aligned with that. And it's our intention, after speaking to some of the commissioners, that we, this is the first step. This is a Band-Aid ordinance. Uh, we realize that this doesn't do the job. It basically, and newer is more revenue coming into the tree mitigation fund and frankly, the tree mitigation fund was not appropriately and, and proactively handled by the county staff. So we, we are, we're trying to start utilizing those funds to get them on the street, to increase the number of trees in our county and increase the canopy. So what I'd like to do is taking this opportunity and having a candid discussion with the planning commission and also having a new ACA, uh, ask for a continuance of this matter and not gonna just let it die, but come up with some, maybe some recommendations so this Band-Aid first step is more effective.
Yep. I don't think we wanna let the issue die. I think we're all concerned about trees.
Yeah, because I, I, I mean, if, if the planning commission doesn't support it and then we go to the, the board of county commissioners, I don't, I'd like to see us work with the planning commission coming up with a better outcome.
I think that's a good idea. We appreciate that. Just a couple clarifications. The pushback, cause I watched a, a lot of those horizontal roundtable meetings and those The pushback was about the tree survey requirements and the whole crazy point scheme that was proposed and I would tell you, I still come to the same conclusion, we can make a crazy tree evaluation and point scheme and charges for taking down trees, but at the end of the day, they still, in my opinion, were not going to move the needle or incentivize a developer to save the trees. All they were, were going to ra, one, they were gonna create more fees for, I guess, landscape architects or arborists to go out and evaluate trees, a little more paid into the tree fund. And I hear you, well, we're gonna raise more revenue and get the trees out on the, in the community from the tree fund, but we've already got a tree fund that hasn't been, I've heard the commissioners in multiple discussions, that we've got all this money in the tree fund that still hasn't been spent. So this is money that's been collected years over years and that the trees still aren't out there, at least being paid for from the tree fund. So all I see this is just more money in the bank and I guess maybe we collect more interest on the tree fund, but I feel like you just need a different, again, I feel like this needs to go more to the comprehensive plan and a way of doing business more so than an ordinance. We have a tree protection ordinance and this isn't any, this isn't much radically different other than it's increased the fees. Well, this ordinance has been on the books, I don't know how long, twenty years, twenty-five years, hasn't stopped anybody from cutting it down a tree. And I'll be honest with you.
As an effort to move, move it forward, I think, uh, Mr. Engel had a great suggestion. It's a good idea to continue it.
And Mr. Chairman, I love coming back with carrots here. I mean, I think that's, that's the positive way of dealing with it. And I wanted to tell you, Mr. Moody, that you're right about money sitting there. We have over three million bucks sitting in that fund. And now, you know, and one of the problems is, is the prescription of use of funds in the current ordinance is too narrow. So we're, we're opening it up and I, I can tell you that we have, we, we could spend that money three times.
And I would tell you, I would be very supportive of tweaks in the ordinance to do that, like to open up the spigot to let the trees get planted out of that fund or figure out, you know, how the county can use them for beautification projects or to incentivize redevelopment projects, especially up in the northwest market area and down in, what, what do we call holiday now? What market area is that?
That, that is the west market area as well, sir.
Well, we, what, what we want, you know, these places, that a lot of times, just the cost, when somebody wants to come in and they gotta change a use and they need to get a new site plan, the cost of complying with the landscape plan, it becomes unaffordable for them. So I'd like to see changes to the current ordinance that allow for the use of these kinds of funds. But I think when we're talking about mass areas of trees and big developments, just that, another twenty-five or fifty dollars, even if it's a hundred dollars an inch, it's, it's not, the math just doesn't add up on that.
Can I ask a question, David?
Yes, sir.
And I don't have an objection to a continuance, but if the reason why you wanted to pursue the Band-Aid was simply to get the fees updated, why can't you just amend the fee resolution? I mean, it, it just, I mean, and then sort of table everything else until you come up with a more comprehensive solution? Cause you have a resolution today, oh eight, dash, two six four, whatever it is, that establishes the fee per inch. You could in theory just update that resolution to strike, for the, whatever deal you struck with TBBA in terms of the rates, at least get, at least to get that in place so that you got updated fees while you pursue a more comprehensive ordinance to deal with all the other trees.
Well, that's a great idea and the planning commission could recommend that today. We could bring that forward.
Well, I'm not even sure you need planning commission action to update that resolution to be.
No, but I mean, we, we could come back and do that, at least to get the fees on the table because we're, we're undercharging our development community compared to our peers by a dramatic amount.
Sure. And I, I don't, I don't actually think there's an argue, I wanna make it clear, I would agree that our rates may be lower than some of the surrounding communities and maybe they, we could afford an increase. All I'm saying though is that, don't be fooled to think that because we charge another twenty-five dollars an inch, that anybody's gonna make a decision to not cut a tree down because the fee got higher. In fact, what I see is that doesn't really, that doesn't so much penalize the big developers. They got the budgets that they can go in and afford this. The person that it penalizes is my next door neighbor that has to pay the bigger fee to cut down the tree.
Well, we really appreciate the input that the planning commission has given us and I thank you very much.
The, the only thing I'm gonna add, David, is if you're gonna do a more comprehensive ordinance, and I'm a little surprised that TBBA would be object to this, is that we probably should codify the PM twenty-six requirements for trees. I mean, I, it doesn't make sense to me why only the MPUDs have to comply with what's in PM twenty-six, but anybody that comes in with the Euclidean zoning apparently doesn't have to. So I would think that even TBBA would support a more uniform tree requirement that isn't limited to just the MPUDs.
Here's my colleague, PM twenty-six.
Victorios Pito's playing development economic growth. Uh, yes, it's in the plan to codify the tree requirements for PM twenty-six, but this, this ordinance here was about tree preservation versus what's in PM twenty-six is about landscaping and the approach to landscaping.
Well, but there's some tree, there's some tree requirements in PM twenty-six as well.
Yeah, it, it's not necessarily tree preservation requirements though, it's about how you put the new trees on the lots.
So you're saying that would be an amendment to nine oh five?
It's another ordinance, yeah. But, but to your point, we can still do it, yes.
Okay, so what do we do for that?
So that, that, but if we're gonna continue it and deal with the larger issues, I'm just saying that you might as well codify those too. But I don't know how long we continue in, you want, David, um, on this, I mean?
I, I think we need at least ninety days.
I, well, aren't there certain things, David, that, that are here that this helps? I mean, like direction or ability to spend dollars that are in the tree fund, isn't that outlined in here and clarified in here?
But they could also put that in the resolution.
Yeah, I, I think. Well, we can do that, not, that doesn't have to get continued, that can be done in the interim.
For the record, David Engel, again, uh, yes, um, why don't we focus on the resolution cleanup? We can come back, uh, within, you know, probably the seventeenth of April. How's that, gives me a month to work with, because we have to get back to the TBBA because, you know, we, we, we try to maximize our stakeholder engagement and our transparency, but, uh, we could, we could, we come back with a resolution fix and then we will work judiciously over the next ninety days, coming up with a, a, a better way of preserving trees in our county.
Yeah, I'd like to see some workshops on the issue. There were some horizontal roundtable meetings and I, I, unfortunately, because I sit on this board, we, we've been counseled not to participate cause the issues may become before the planning commission, but I heard a lot of the discussion. And I think part of the problem with the format is, is you go to the horizontal roundtable and you present them, here's the proposed new tree ordinance and they're commenting on the ordinance themselves. And I heard all the rumblings and grumblings about the point scheme and the amount of work it was gonna take to do the tree surveys, but nobody, the reason I'm proposing workshops is I think you need to get the, the developers and the engineers and the landscape architects and get everybody in a room and say, what can we do to attempt to save the trees? Where are there things? Where are there things in the code that we think could be changed or that cause us to keep, to, to have to remove trees that might be changeable? And I think some of the flood regulations are gonna stop us from doing this. But, or are there things we can offer you that would incentivize you to do more clustering? Or, we need to get some ideas out on the, I'm one idea. There's probably 10 other good ideas out there too, if we go to the people and ask them.
So, to back up, um.
Ask them, what do you, could you, who's them?
Just to get some ideas. I've thrown out one idea as to an approach to attempt to save the trees. And it doesn't mean I'm right or that I have the best idea. But I think if you have a workshop where people can brainstorm this stuff and tell you, these are my challenges as a developer, this is my challenge in attempting to save the trees, to give you some good ideas about what you can do to incentivize large scale saving of trees, not just an individual tree here and there.
That's a good idea because most members of the TBBA were sensitive to our mission. And I think that using their experience would be helpful, coming up with ideas. And we realize that carrots are good for you.
So, what I'm hearing is, so, yes, you're talking about a planning commission workshop, right?
I'm talking about.
Well, I think it would have to be, if you all want to participate and not violate the sunshine law, I think it has to be a workshop of the planning commission if you want to participate in this brainstorm.
Well, okay. Yeah, that'd be fine.
I think you have to have a stakeholder, I mean, clearly a stakeholder workshop too or something. Whatever you want to call it.
I mean, you can invite all those stakeholders to the workshop.
We'll cordially invite them on the, on, you know, through the billanning commission.
I just think that these things need to be, and I see this a lot with proposed ordinances, with, with proposed land development code changes. What happens is the staff goes and we've got this ordinance development, OT or whatever you call it, ordinance development team, and you're doing all the work back there and then, here's what we're gonna do. And then everybody's going, whoa, 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 wait a minute. And why don't we get everybody in a room together and say, here's the mission we're trying to accomplish, the goal we're trying to achieve. Get people to throw out ideas. Sometimes when you throw the spaghetti at the wall, it actually sticks. And do that first, then start writing the legalese. I think it would be helpful, yeah.
So I guess I'll defer to Mr. Engel on when he can set a work, that kind of workshop. But I might want to be, be clear, we're talking about a workshop to deal with the more global solution to tree preservation. The issue about the increase in the fees and clarifying what you can use a tree mitigation fund, that's, sounds like that's an amendment to the resolution. Are you asking that, because normally amendments to resolutions don't have to come to the planning commission? Are you asking for it to come to the planning commission?
We have a clear path on the fees and the use of funds.
Yeah. And I would tell you, I am not opposed to raising those fees.
So I guess my question is, do you all have any objection to them amending the current resolution to increase the fees and clarify the use of the funds? And just that goes straight to the board? You don't need to see that anymore?
I have no objection.
No objection to that.
Right, great, then we'll just, we'll, I'll work with Chair Gray and we'll schedule a workshop. And, and the chair and I have had discussions about having planning commission workshops, so this is great. Thank you.
Okay, great. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
So Patrick, I'll just ask you, logistically, um, can you and Elizabeth work on amending that resolution to update the fees and the use of the funds?
Sure.
I mean, you're just gonna borrow a lot of what's in the ordinance and just move it to the resolution, right?
Sure. The, the only question I have is that I think our existing code has language about how much you're paying. So how?
But it said it by resolution. It actually defers to the resolution.
Uh, okay, I can double check that.
Yeah, because I saw that you struck the language that says by resolution.
Okay.
So, which I think you did because you were putting it in the code.
Sure, okay.
So I think if you're amending the resolution, you're still operating within the code because it says by resolution, you just gotta amend that resolution. But Mr. Engel was right, that, that resolution was last updated in 2008.
Sure.
So we're.
Been a lot of inflation since then.
And we've updated a lot of our impact fees since then, so, I mean, this is somewhat analogous to an impact fee, so it makes sense that needs to be updated.
You could have indexed off across the lumber, then it grew up.
Uh, yes, I can work with Elizabeth. Anything else for me?
So, we don't have to take any action on this?
Well, I think you're, when it sounds, yeah, it sounds like, so it sounds like he's got another path on the, the fee part of it, which that you don't need to act on. As far as the ordinance, I guess the question is, you can continue it, but you also could just, like, a staff could also just withdraw it too and, and bring back a different one. I, I don't know what you want, I don't know what staff's preference is.
Go ahead.
I, I, I didn't have a preference, so.
What I was gonna say is, if the staff wants to come in and make clarifications in the existing ordinance where we think language is ambiguous or there's, you know, room for multiple interpretations, I wouldn't be opposed to doing something like that.
Sure.
So I guess I'm asking you and Mr. Engel, is, do you see any benefit to continuing this? Or do you want to just withdraw it and bring back something else? You, you tell us.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Goldstein and the planning commission, we want to withdraw the item. And based on direction and, and guidance, we're gonna proceed with a resolution to the board, updating the fees and the use of funds. And we're gonna work on establishing, as soon as we can, a planning commission workshop with our development stakeholder, industry peers.
Sounds great.
Maybe the public too, maybe, you know, they should have some input as well, if anybody's interested.
If they're withdrawing the ordinance, I understand they're gonna do a separate resolution, but if they're withdrawing the ordinance, I don't think you need to take any action.
Thank you.
Thank you, great, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Patrick.
Yep, thank you. Yeah.
Good job.
Sure, 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 sure.
Some kind of pat on the back.
He got stuck with it.
Mr. Chairman, the last item on the list is PC 16, which is the Proposed Docks and Seawalls Ordinance by Amandala Hill.
Amandala Hill, Planning, Development and Economic Growth. Uh, the item before you is Section 1001, Docks and Seawalls Ordinance Update. The intent of the ordinance update is to readopt text changes to the Pasco County Land Development Code that were invalidated by the Circuit Court for Pasco County Civil Division through a motion for partial summary judgment in 2023. Uh, an additional intent of this ordinance update is to provide standards on boat lift canopies. So just to give a brief history of the ordinance, back in 2012, uh, Section 1001 Docks and Seawalls was created by the restated Land Development Code. In 2017, there was a BOCC workshop to discuss, among other items, whether or not to continue to prohibit roofs over docks. Ordinance 19 dash 12 was passed in 2019. And then in 2021, the BOCC had a discussion that resulted in the decision to abandon the previous direction that the board wished to proceed with an amendment to the LDC to allow covers over docks. And then like I mentioned before, in 2023, there was that invalidation of ordinance 19 dash 12.
Man, just, hold, just real quick, go back, I'm trying to understand really kind of the sequence of events.
You're allowing covers over docks.
Uh, right now, covers are not allowed over docks.
Not allowed over docks.
Correct.
Okay, so in 2019, ordinance 19 dash 12 prohibited roofs over docks, correct?
Yes.
And then in 2021, the board
voted to allow.
Changed, voted to allow them?
So there was discussion as to whether or not to allow them. They decided to abandon that discussion as to proceed with allowing them.
I think that, that bullet's a little confusing.
Yeah, it sounds, sounded to me like they were approving.
So, so my understanding is that 2019, the ordinance, the 2019, wasn't there an ordinance that allowed roofs over docks but only on lakes?
I don't have clarity on that. Uh, Terry?
That was in the staff.
That was in the, I believe that was in the 2021 effort. And then it was dropped, basically. We, we were told.
No, before that, okay, the ordinance, I believe it was ordinance 19 dash 12. I don't know Sam's or, but he knows this history better than me. But my recollection is that originally, they were prohibited entirely. We then adopted an ordinance, I believe it was 19 dash 12, that allowed them only on inland lakes. It still prohibited them on, so, so I believe that was ordinance 19 dash 12. Which you might want to clarify that in your bullet about ordinance 19 dash 12.
Will do.
And then there was some discussion about allowing them even on the coast in 2021. That was the ordinance that was brought to the board and then abandoned, basically. After that, the court invalidated 19 dash 12, which basically meant that they went back to the prior version, which meant they were prohibited entirely.
Right.
Like, they're not even currently allowed on lakes because 19 dash 12 was invalidated, is my understanding. So then what happened is after 19 dash 12 was invalidated, there was a discussion with the board about whether we would just readopt ordinance 19 dash 12, which would allow them on lakes but not the coast. But it appeared that the board wanted to now allow them countywide. And so that's the ordinance that's before you today. That's my understanding of the history. Somebody tell me if I'm wrong. Anybody?
I think that's right.
Okay. Is that clearer?
Sort of.
Thank you.
As mine, yes.
Okay, so for the proposed changes, uh, for Section 1001.1, intent and purpose, an additional purpose is added to provide standards for reasonable protection of vessels from the elements. Section 1001.4, visibility, additional clarification on the prohibitions of buildings or structures on waterfront properties provided. Specifically, there's an expansion of the applicable structures listed. Uh, there is also an expansion in the description of allowable structures that are subject to height limitations. It also clarifies the exception of when roofs are prohibited. And it prohibits residential use of enclosed areas built over docks. For Section 1001.5, maximum projection and location of docks and seawalls, that section is renamed from navigability and protection of watercourses to maximum projection and location of docks and seawalls. The previous prohibition of obstructions in this section is removed. Additional guidance on the maximum projection is added. The retroactive applicability of the subsection is updated to provide revised guidance. So more specifically, uh, there is removal of non-applicable language to the subsection. An exception is added to the existing maximum projection standard. The seawall locations, uh, text was just relocated. There's nothing that has been added there, but it was relocated from the end of that subsection to the section immediately after the common ownership dock section. And then for the subsection regarding, um, regarding the retroactive applicability, there is a summary of the description of non-conforming structures. And it also addresses the restoration of substantially damaged structures. There is also a proposed edit to Appendix A to amend the definition of mean high water line. And then in terms of proposed additions, uh, there is a proposal to add Section 1001.6 for boat lift canopies. In that new section, there are dimensional standards and standards regarding placement that are included within that section. And then there's also a proposal to add two new definitions, one for boat lift canopy and one for waterfront property.
Can you go over those?
Sure. I have it in the presentation.
Great.
And the staff recommendation is to recommend that the local planning agency find a proposed amendment consistent with a comprehensive plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners. I could just advance a bit. This is just the redline text. So these are the proposed, uh, edits and additions to Appendix A.
Could you go back to your picture for a second?
Sure.
So that's, this is showing the type of cover you could, it will now be allowed over docks, is that right?
That is correct. And it gives specifications as to the height, length, width, horizontal projection, side setback, curtain length and maximum protection.
Is this generally consistent with what staff was proposing in 2021 before the board told staff to go away?
This came directly from that initial proposal in 2021.
Okay, thank you.
And the mean high water line definition?
So previously, it was the intersection of the tidal plain of the mean high water line with the shore. Uh, mean high water is the average height of waters over a 19-year period. And now it's been amended to the intersection of the tidal plain of mean high water with the shore. It shall also mean the ordinary high water line of non-tidal natural water bodies. The precise delineation of the ordinary high water line or mean high water line shall be determined through side-specific studies and field determinations by the applicant and SWFMA, DEP and/or Army Corps of Engineers as applicable prior to the construction plan approval.
Okay. And then a question about the ordinance. So, the, and maybe you could go back to your picture. It seems like this ordinance would allow a cover over a boat lift, but so long as the boat lift is part of the dock. But if one could not, so if they had like a boat lifted, it says, they can't do this if it's attached to the seawall rather than the dock.
So in terms of placement, there is specifications here. So they're allowed over vertical or canny lever lifts only. They're prohibited over elevator lifts, davits or other similar, or similar, similar scenarios where the canopy supports would be attached to a seawall or a similar condition.
I get it, but why the prohibition over, uh, davits? Or, you know, if it's attached to the seawall, I'm trying to understand why there's a difference.
I personally don't have the context on that. Uh, Terry, do you have additional insights from 2021 when this was first proposed? Because the language here is also the same from that initial proposal.
That was over four years ago at this point. Um, I don't have the, the recollection. The only thing that I do recall though is that that language was brought before the planning commission and was moved through the process and it got to the board when the board decided to abandon the pro- So what we were doing in this latest effort was just take what was, what had gotten through the process in 21 and reinsert it again.
Well, one of the problems might be with the davits is they might just be, davits are too high. They're gonna, way up above where the boat is.
Well, so there's limits, so there's a height limit.
You're limited to 15 feet.
There's a, there's a height limit of 15 feet above the mean high water line. So I guess what I'm asking, and I'm not trying to be a proponent of these things one way or the other, what I'm asking is what's the difference if the canopy is over a davit and it's no higher than 15 feet above the mean high water line? How is that different than if it's attached to the dock? I just, not understanding that.
We can potentially take that question back to BCS for some clarity on it?
Yeah, I was, I think we need to go back to BCS because it may be a building code issue too, so.
Well.
It is, yeah. So we can, we can find the answer to that.
A build, as long as it meets the Florida building code, why would, I'm just not understanding that. And I'm familiar enough with the building code, whether it's attached to the seawall or attached to the dock, it still needs to meet a certain wind loading.
Well, number three requires to comply with the building code anyway.
Right.
But I, again, I don't, I think we have anybody from BCS here to know. I mean, I will say that from a policy standpoint, I believe the board direction was to allow roofs over docks, not necessarily these other structures, but, but.
And that's, all I'm asking is why? I'm trying to understand why I, I.
Why roofs over docks?
Why only over the dock and not over, if one, if one had pulled their boat up against the seawall and put out fenders, why they couldn't have a canopy out over the seawall versus over the dock? That's all I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, that, well, that picture that you showed earlier is, that's attached. It's not over the dock, it's attached to the dock.
Right. And that's what I'm getting of.
And so what's the difference if you have it attached to the dock or as the seawall?
Right, that's what I'm asking.
Man, well, just, just kind of for background, why, why did this just go away in 2021? Man, well, just, just kind of for background, why, why did this just go away in two thousand and twenty-one?
It was based off of that discussion that the board wanted us to basically shelve it at that point in time.
Yeah, I think. Well, man, why, why is it back now? I mean, the board's directing you to allow them?
There's been a change in the membership of the Board of County Commissioners, to be quite honest. I mean, so a majority of the board in two thousand and twenty-one did not want to see roofs over docks. That's, it's as simple as the majority of the board has changed now, and now they're willing to allow roofs over docks.
Okay.
I think the thrust of it is to protect their boats.
Well, I mean, there's other ways to protect your boats too. My concern with something like this is it's.
Sun tears those boats up.
But they make, don't they make covers for boats too?
Yeah, but they tear up the covers too.
Well, I mean, I understand, but, but putting a canopy out there, all of a sudden you're blocking and causing visual obstructions for everybody that's enjoyed the canals of the waterfront.
Sorry, Jamie. Am I to understand that the, the canopy over this thing can only be like a fa-, can't be a hard surface? It has to be like a, a fabric?
There are specifications to that, yes. The canopy shall be a fabric or a similar material that can be rolled and or folded. And there are color specifications here too as well.
Got, got you, okay. I guess here's the question I have from a zoning perspective. There's this, in the supplementary regulations for waterfront properties, there's a fifteen-foot setback from the mean high water line to anything that presents a visually solid wall. So it would seem that the boat covers are in direct conflict with that section of the code. And maybe that's fine, but my question is, where do you draw the line? Okay, if it's fine that I can block the view down the canal with this boat cover, how come I can't? I just had a client that was a hurricane rebuild, and he had to move his house because the balcony off the back of the house was going to encroach in the fifteen-foot high mean, mean high water setback. And this balcony was twenty-five feet up in the air, where it probably doesn't obstruct anybody's view, especially that's down lower. I'm trying to figure out how you rectify the two. It seems that one, this allows something that another section of the code is expressly prohibiting for the purposes of protecting view.
I think that this section speaks to that to some extent. Let me go back a little bit.
Here comes our zoning.
Let me just.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. So in terms of what you just mentioned, that fifteen-feet setback, it actually expands the list of applicable structures to include fabrication fencing or barrier that presents a visually solid type wall or roof.
Right, and that's.
So that's what you're talking about, right?
So, and that's what I'm getting at, is, okay, so now here we are, we're allowing a roof that would encroach in that.
Fifteen feet.
Fifteen-feet mean-high-water setback.
How does, yeah.
But then it was.
That's what I'm trying to understand is why, or the reason, the reason that there's a fifteen-foot mean-high-water setback is it's perceived that there's some harm that if you have an encroachment into that fifteen feet, that you're blocking somebody else's entitlement to a view. So how is allowing this structure not in conflict with that aspiration?
Liam Devine, Planning, Development, and Economic Growth Department. So I do know that section, I know you and I have discussed that section. So that section from supplemental regulations talks about creating a visual screen similar to a wall. These canopies can only be two inches thick, so in, in, in.
Yeah, but this is, they're adding the word roof.
Yeah, but they are adding or roof, which implies it's more, no, not a wall.
And it allows a two-foot curtain.
A two-foot curtain. So I was unaware of the curtain. But I would say if it was just the roof, it wouldn't necessarily be creating a visual wall. That would be creating a roof line, but the, there, there, it would still be possible to be able to be viewed. So it wouldn't be necessarily creating that wall.
Well, that's if you have a flat roof. If I got a gable roof and I'm looking at it from that side, that's a wall.
So Liam, I, I do understand your interpretation when it just said presents as a visually solid-type wall. But with this code change, they're adding or roof. So a roof doesn't present as a visually solid-type wall?
Correct.
Isn't the addition of or roof make a direct conflict?
I'm confused by your question.
Well, your argument is that there, that this section one thousand and one point four A is not in conflict with the concept of doing a two-inch roof because it doesn't present as a wall.
Yes.
Correct? And I see that line when it says, that says that presents as a visually solid-type wall. But then this, this amendment to the code is proposing to add or roof to the, after wall.
To the supplemental regulations, five thirty?
Okay, I'm, I'm going by what's on the screen right here. I don't, maybe that's not the vision we should be looking at. I don't know.
That's the same language that's the, that's in the supplemental.
I think it's roof. Why can't you just remove roof? Yeah. I mean, that's like a call.
Terry, Natacha Spetho, is planning development, economic growth. It seems to me that either the word fabrication or, or roof are the, are the words that are tripping this up a little bit. So to the extent that we can clean this up, perhaps we just delete the word or roof. I think part of the original drafting from two thousand and twenty-one considered the fabric roof to be an amenable material that can be, as, as the ordinance notes, rolled up in the event of a hurricane coming. You could just basically take the roof away, and then now it's a little bit more wind resistant in that regard. Or wind resilient, maybe is a better word. Wind resilient in that regard. And then also if there's no boat docked and you don't need the roof, you can just.
I mean, but you get to the heart of Mr. Moody's question, it sounds like what you're, I hear staff saying is that you view that requirement as basically prohibiting somebody blocking the view with a wall or a fence or something that's.
With a wall, yeah.
That presents, where it's basically blocking it this way.
Yep.
But if it has, if it's only blocking it with the, some roof-type structure or canopy-type structure, that would not be a violation of that section. I think that's what Liam is saying.
That's what I'm saying.
If that's what you're, if that's what your position is, you can't be adding or roof.
Right.
But I would tell you that depends upon your point of view.
I, I.
Where you're viewing this from.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm not saying, I want to be clear, I'm not going to wade into the policy issue about whether these should be allowed or not. I'm just trying to reconcile the two code sections. So if staff's position is that one thousand and one point four A only applies to wall-type structures, I agree that you should strike the word fabrication and the word roof from your proposed amendment.
But I would tell you that in practice, for instance, and I'm not trying to support or defend a client, just using it as an example, it was a balcony with ballisters, that's not solid, but it still obst-, could obstruct someone's view.
Yeah, I mean, to be clear, if.
And so it was still prohibited from encroaching into the mean high water setback.
If planning commission and or the board don't want to block the view at all, to your point, then you probably shouldn't be allowing this ordinance at all. I mean, I, but.
The commission wants the ordinance.
It appears that a majority of the commission, current commission wants to allow some type of canopy over the boats.
Mr. Chairman, I was just referring to staff. So if we, if we strike the or roof phrase from this sentence, it would be consistent with section five thirty dot thirteen, which also references the same type of language.
Okay.
Yeah, that looks like it's almost identically the same.
Yeah, so it sounds like maybe that word or roof was some leftover clause that probably shouldn't have been there.
It looks like it.
Okay.
Why don't you just refer to that other section?
Yeah, why are we regurgitating the same language again? Why aren't we just referencing that section?
Yeah, just saying it has to be in compliance with five thirty, whatever it is. And that's one of the reasons for my question is I.
We can make sure.
I don't want there to be a confusion, well, if it's this, it's this ordinance, or if it's this, it's one or the other.
Yeah, we can, that, either that language already exists, I don't have the actual code open in front of me right now. But it, from what it looks like on the screen, there's existing language in the code that's already referring to this. But in any event, we can go back and just refer to the one section.
But clearly staff's intent is that whichever section we're talking about, it's a prohibition on basically solid-type wall structures. Is that what you're basically saying?
Sorry, I was going to, you answered that one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it doesn't necessarily prohibit this ordinance, which is canopies?
So.
That's your position. I just want to be clear what we're talking about.
I'm trying to understand and.
I just want to give the answer to the question first, okay? So is that accurate that you're not, you're not trying to, through that, those two sections we just talked about prohibit boat canopies?
The idea of the amendment in twenty-one and then what's coming forward now is to enable the boat lift canopy, but with a specific type of material.
Okay. Go ahead with your question now, sorry.
So.
Excuse me, if I could.
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I just want to note, because I know there is confusion, you were trying to not have confusion between the language that already exists in this code and this proposed one. Just so you know, section five thirty point thirteen of where that visual screening come from, comes from, actually references section one zero zero one. So they reference each other.
Nonetheless, it says visually solid-type wall. All right, but that same code section prevents a birdcage around a swimming pool to encroach in that fifteen-foot mean-high-water setback. Well, a screen for a pool is not a solid wall. A ballisters on a balcony are not a solid wall. So there has to be consistency, either consistency in the language, maybe the language needs to be changed, because the interpretation has been, the historic, and I've been doing this a long time, the historic interpretation is we go after screens, we go after fences, you know, I could even come in with a picket-type fence that you can see through, but it's still prohibited. Interestingly enough, here's where nobody thought beyond lunch when they wrote this. There's nothing that stops me from going out and planting a viburnum hedge in the fifteen-foot mean-high-water setback and watering the living heck out of it and letting it get twenty feet tall and blocking somebody's view. It's only if I want to put something that's.
So was staff's intent to prohibit vertical obstructions and not horizontal obstructions? Is that the general gist of what you're trying to achieve here?
I think that the horizontal obstructions was a concern in the initial discussions about roofs over docks and what kind of barrier to visibility that an actual roof over a dock would cause. And what the middle ground was in two thousand and twenty-one and what's being presented here is that if we're going to put a cover of some sort, a canopy of some sort, over a dock or a boat lift, it should be of a very limited and specific type of material that can be folded away or taken down in the event that there's a hurricane. Because I think that, the, the two main issues in two thousand and twenty-one were the aesthetic value of preserving the visibility down the canals and what have you. And the second was the danger posed by high winds when these canopies get blown off. That was, that was what was happening in two thousand and twenty-one.
Yeah, but if they're required to meet the building code, then there's a wind load that they have to meet, whether it's a fabric or whether it's wood or fiberglass or steel, they still have to be able to survive that wind.
I understand. I'm just relating what some of the background was in two thousand and twenty-one that went into that.
And practically, John, practically the, the visibility barrier comes from having the boat lifted up. That's where, that's where you, that's what blocks the vision, not the roof. So, I mean, if you're gonna take that tag, you gotta say, well, you can't have a boat either because that blocks my view.
Yeah, and don't get me wrong, the, the reason for my questions has more to do that so that the code is consistent. What I'm getting at is you may need to go back and change one zero zero one point four to better clarify what it is you're trying to do. And then you can make the statement that you find that these boat covers or whatever are not in conflict with that particular section. I can just tell you as someone who uses this code, my clients, they go down to the building department and one person tells them, oh, yeah, 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 that's all right if it's in the fifteen-foot mean-high water. And then it gets over into the zoning person, says, no, 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 you can't do that. There needs to be, I think the language is a little ambiguous. It's like I said, it talks about a visually solid-type wall, but yet a swimming pool and cool, pool enclosure with a screen that you can see through is considered to be a visually solid wall. That doesn't make any sense.
Well, I'm wondering now, because I'm rereading this, this is or roof. I wonder if staff's position was that he, these canopies are not roofs. I mean, is that, is that why or roof is there is because is staff's position that these canopies are not functioning as a roof, they're functioning as something else? They're, because they're removable, they're not a roof?
Well, in the past, many people have used a patched roof over their boat. Not on the dock, it's not on the, it's not on the land at all. But if you have a boat and you lift it up out of the water, it's going to block the view. It's true.
And then by the same token, if I have davits, if I have davits and I lift my boat up just above the seawall and then swing the davits so that they're pointing into the backyard, now I've got this visually solid obstruction in the fifteen-foot mean-high-water setback. That's why I'm trying to figure this out. Try to figure out what's, what's important, what are we trying to protect?
Are you asking what were we trying to protect in, with the original ordinance or with this current ordinance?
Well, it's, to me, it seems that the two are in some conflict, and that's all I'm trying to resolve.
I think Mr. Pethos is correct, the regi-, the reason for the original prohibition on roofs, canopies, whatever you want to call them, over, over docks or over boats, was the fear of the visual impact and then becoming projectiles during a hurricane. So that was for many, many, many years, up until this last year, that was the county's position is that these should not be allowed for that reason. And part of the reason we allowed them on inland lakes is because there was less, first of all, there was less of a hurricane potential on inland lakes. But also they tended to be more spread out on lakes, and so the, the visual impact was not as severe on lakes. So that was the reason why the board eased up on the requirement in two thousand and nineteen. It was only recently that the board said, and we want you to also ease up on the requirement on the coast. But that's, so in staff's defense, all they did was say, okay, the board has changed direction, we're going to bring back the ordinance that we, we're going to bring you in two thousand and twenty-one. And here it is.
All right.
So it appears that the board is less concerned about those two issues now. By the way, you also need to take public comment on this ordinance before you. Unless you have more questions for staff, you probably should take public comment.
Any more questions for Staff?
No.
Okay, so is there anybody from, from the public that's here to comment?
No, I step aside to the public.
He's not gonna let anybody comment.
Barbara Willhite, an individual who lives at fifty twenty Oyster Cove in Gulf Harbors. I have a beautiful home in Gulf Harbors, I've lived there for almost ten years. So to me, this is a question about change, right, so should there be a change? My home's been there for forty-one years, and the point of saying, well, there's a boat there, there's two reasons why I have a home there. One is, so I can have a boat out back, it's common, actually I have three of them, but, 'cause my husband has to have three. But it's common to have boats out back, and you buy considering that because you actually wanna have a boat out back. The second reason you live there is for the view. I am fortunate enough to live on a canal that face, that goes east-west. So when I look down the canal, I get to see the sunset. It also means I look by all of my neighbors, all the way down my canal, and look at their boats and their docks, but all those things are common. And I bought into that. But I also bought into no boat covers. In Pasco County, no boat covers. And so to change for the convenience of some people that want to protect their boat in that manner, to change my view, to change what I bought into for the convenience of someone else, isn't fair and not reasonable. There are ways to protect your boat. You get out there and you put the cover on it, take the cover off, or you say, heck, you know, every three years I gotta put new soft goods. That's a term that I understand from my husband, that's what you call the padding on your boat. So I really want, and so the board may think they wanna do that, and the other question is, did anybody notify any of the HOAs and any of these affected communities? Not that I could go talk to my neighbors about this, because most of them don't live there now. Um, I have my neighbors that live with me, I have roommates for, going on six months because of what happened to our area. I was fortunate enough, my house was built to FEMA codes when I built, when it was built in nineteen eighty-four, so we had no effects, none, of either of those hurricanes. But, so I want you to think about change, and is it fair? If somebody wants a boat canopy, that's gonna sound harsh, but go buy in a county where you can have that. But don't come where, where you're, where the rules are no boat canopies and change it on all of us for the convenience of others, so. Does impact me, the view is really important, and I will definitely change my view if, if everybody can have boat canopies all the way down my canal. Thank you.
So Barbara, just to be clear, then you would support the board just re-adopting ordinance nineteen dash twelve?
That's correct, yes.
That allowed them on inland lakes?
Yes, I, the lakes are a different situation, I recognize that, I, my husband's from Canada, they have lake houses there. You know, so I get the difference, they all have boathouses, it's very different.
Quick question in that same regard. If I had a house, let's say I have a house at Gulf Harbors Beach that faces west directly to the Gulf of Mexico, my view is, is the Gulf. I'm sorry, did I say Mexico? Gulf of America. How, if, if I had that view on open water, this ordinance or the ordinance you would propose reinstating would also prohibit them from having a boat cover, and I'm not trying, I'm trying to figure out in my mind, how would that be any different than being on a lake?
Well, I can tell you that the sun changes. So at one point in the year, you look this way for the sunset, if you're, if I'm on the open Gulf, and then the next part of the year, it's over here.
Okay, similarly on a lake.
You know? Maybe, maybe, yeah, I'm, hey, I'm, I didn't, I didn't suggest the lake, I mean, that was something the board did, but I'm just saying that's not a reason to, to change the views for these waterfront properties.
Well, Barbara, also, don't forget that there was, was a time when they did allow boat covers, they even allowed boat houses along the river.
Yes, there were.
So-
They're historical, in fact.
They, they weren't very happy about that change either, so, you know, there's, there's history.
Sure, right, I'm, I, I'm just saying for, for my Gulf front community, what my experience is, so, thank you.
Is, so in some of the discussions that I've heard, it seems that there are some communities-
Before you, before you talk, did we get anybody else that wants to speak from the public? I just wanna get all the public.
I, I asked and nobody said anything.
Somebody, somebody raised their hand.
Oh, they did? Oh, you already spoke once, though.
Pastor John Kerewak, one five nine two five, Gremlin Lane, Spring Hill, Florida. And I would just say, you know, likewise, I think that those that may or may not be watching who live in a rural protected area might feel the same way, that they purchased their home in a rural area looking to enjoy the scenery that they purchased. And likewise, change has been coming, and if there are, you know, if there are reasons why, I'm not sure that I necessarily know why, but I think that just as Chairman Gray mentioned, you know, there are changes that happen and we have to go with the flow, and there are a lot of people not happy with that. And I think that, you know, just as I am now, I have the opportunity to come and, and, you know, state my concern, and I know that I looked into this particular situation in depth, and it seems like there were a lot of folks that were unhappy about not allowing the boat covers, and some choose to, you know, put the cover on, and then some choose to build. You know, we have rights, we own our property, and I understand, maybe someday I'll get to the Gulf of America. I'm not there now, but I think to the point that, you know, they're asking for this to go back to where they were allowing boat covers, and I just don't see any difference than, you know, the disruption that is occurring in the rural areas of Pasco County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, sorry, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
I was, oh, I was going to ask, in listening to these discussions in the board, I've heard one commissioner advocate for these kinds of covers, and the claim is that that commissioner's constituents support these covers, and I've heard another commissioner argue that the constituents of that commissioner don't want these covers. The question is, can the ordinance be applied to those areas that want them and those areas that don't want them? Or for instance, could the, sorry, Mr. Engel, to burden you with a workshop, but could one hold a workshop and find out, hey, this neighborhood really wants these things and doesn't have a problem with them, but this neighborhood's adamant they don't want anything to do with these, and maybe they're prohibited there?
So-
Or-
Not on a blanket basis, I don't think that's defensible. I mean, I, we were able to defend inland versus coast because there are rational reasons to differentiate them. I mean, you have to have some rational basis to defend your regulation. Now, could you make them a special exception use and then handle them on a case-by-case basis? I guess you could.
Okay, that's a possible solution.
I mean, that, that's the only way I know to handle them on a case-by-case basis is to make them a conditional or special exception use where you only allow them, you know, somebody's gotta file an application to do that. That's the only, I don't know how else to do what you're talking about. And I don't know, Barbara, would have a different position if they were a special exception or conditional use? Typically with a special-
Thinking about it.
Well, I mean, I guess one advantage is then you'd have to notify your neighbors that you were proposing the use, which would give them an opportunity to object.
Or to agree on what would preserve their neighbor's view to keep peace in the neighborhood.
In theory, if they were conditional use or special exception, you could approve it with conditions as well, such as maybe a lower height, or maybe even a higher height, I mean, you could, so that it doesn't impact the view as much. So it is, it is a potential middle ground. I don't know that it's, we, I can't tell you whether that's consistent with the board direction or not, because the board direction was clearly to allow these, so.
Is that by-
And we have had at least one commissioner, when we were talking about ADUs, making some of them a special exception use, who objected to it being a special exception use, 'cause that was too much burden to put on somebody.
Yeah, heard, listened to it.
So, can't tell you whether the board would agree with that, but I'm just, and I, I can't defend a ordinance that says this applies everywhere other than Gulf Harbors, okay, I, but you probably could defend there an ordinance that says that it's a special exception or conditional use.
Each, each respective board could adopt their own declarations or something like that to prohibit-
Yeah, I mean, yeah, to be clear, I think the problem with Gulf Harbors, and Barbara could tell me if I'm wrong, is they don't have a man, any mandatory need restrictions that would prohibit this.
Right, and I, and I think that's a lot of the case in the, the west side of the county, it's older. And so that, maybe there were covenants and restrictions that were in place when the communities were first developed, but they've now been here fifty, sixty-plus years, and those covenants have expired, so.
But you're correct, that any particular HOA could have more restrictive requirements to prohibit it.
In a new community, that's easy to handle.
But a lot of the communities on the Gulf are, are older communities that, that are probably only regulated by our ordinance and not by any HOA restrictions. Can we ask Barbara what she thinks about the special exception or conditional use?
She was contemplating it.
Would she, would that be more tolerable?
Since you're the only person from the county that cares.
It, that actually would, obviously, there's a balance here, right, that we're all struggling with. At least that gives the opportunity for neighbors to talk with neighbors as opposed to just, so. I mean, it is, it could be a better balance. Certainly, this doesn't go away, 'cause one year it's, we're not gonna do it, another year we're gonna do it, and so maybe this is, would, would achieve a balance, David's idea, that, that would allow it, but you have to look at the circumstances.
That's interesting that you say that, 'cause you've had one board that says, no, we don't want them. This board says, well, we'll allow them, but the next board might say, hell, no, get rid of these things, and we just keep amending the, so in some ways, maybe the special exception is the answer.
Certainly would allow for that balance, and you could consider the cases on a case-by-case basis, 'cause it is different, it is different. If you're, which way your canal's going, it does make a difference, you know, what was that?
Our meetings aren't long enough anyways.
Fifty of them at one time.
Jamie, they'll all be on the consent agenda, relax.
I need my pay double.
To Mr. Girardi's point, though, it would add a, a workload to the planning commission, and of course, to the, to the staff to process the special exceptions, et cetera. This wouldn't be the only special exception that we're considering.
Well, then you should just make the board hear those special exceptions, and then decide if you wanna be consistent one way or the other.
Go with a different name.
They don't go to the planning commission at all?
It just, yeah, and right, so we're looking at two amendments that are making their way through the process right now, this being one, where that could happen, a special exception compromise. But the other one, of course, is the ADUs, which, which has a special exception built into it, and it's just the workload aspect of it, that's all, you'd have to think about a little bit.
The difference with the ADU one, though, is it was special exception only, it had certain things that were allowed as a right, where you wouldn't have additional workload. This, in theory, may be harder, harder to do as sort of an as-a-right provision, if you're trying to accommodate Barbara's concern, because really, any particular canopy could in theory block views.
And I will say that with the ADUs, we're probably gonna hear, if, if the people actually go for them, we're probably gonna hear a lot of special exceptions, because the one caveat that didn't require a special exception is it had to fit within the existing setbacks and lock coverages, and that if you live in a typical suburban-type neighborhood, the chances of you doing that are slim and none, so, without the special exception, in a large lot, that's probably not a problem.
So, and by the way, the board hasn't even approved the ADU ordinance, and it's still, it's still in, still a state of flux, right, Patrick?
Well, they had to argue first what an ADU was.
Right.
And the state may tell us that.
That's true, there's a possibility that we'll get preempted by, by the state on ADUs, but I-
That includes mobile homes, Patrick.
But luckily, you, you don't have, you don't have to worry about ADUs for now, unless the, the special exceptions come before you. But I, you do need to make a recommendation on this ordinance, so you need to, I understand the board has changed direction a few times on this, but this is the ordinance before you, you need to make a recommendation one way or the other on it.
Okay, who's gonna be bold?
I mean, should we, should we clear up the, the minor issue?
You can make Jamie the chair for a minute, then you can make the motion.
That's right.
So I think regardless of what happens, Staff, you're okay with getting rid of that or roof requirement?
Correct.
Okay. Do you wanna motion to that effect, or you're just okay, just getting rid of it?
I, I think the record will speak for itself.
Okay, got it. Okay, so then, now we need, just need something on the recommendation on the remainder of the ordinance.
I don't vote on this, so. Unless, unless you all tie, I guess.
I mean, I'm, I'm a bad person to make a motion, because I'm against this thing, 'cause I just think, I, I just think it blocks and changes everybody's view, so.
Why are you a bad person to make it?
So I'll make a motion to deny.
So nobody wants to make the motion for the middle round of allowing it by special exception or conditional? You're worried about the workload?
If we turn down this motion, we can all make that motion.
Okay, all right, well-
So there's no second.
So there's no second? Okay, that motion, that dies for lack of a second. Why, here are motions for something in the middle.
Well, then I would move to continue this matter for another sixty days.
If you get input?
If the, if the staff can work with that, and I'm open to that, you, you guys tell me how long. To continue it for you to come back and rewrite this, re-propose it as a special exception use. I think that, I think there's probably multiple language changes that have to happen to this ordinance to make it a special exception use that's probably too much drafting to do on the fly right here. That, that's my only reason for continuance.
It depends on whether you wanna see it again. If you don't wanna see it again, you could just make a recommendation that it be approved if it's made a special exception use, and then you can let Staff figure it out between now and the board.
And work it out with the board.
You know, whether they, you know, maybe they could propose an alternate version that, I'm saying, I wouldn't hold it up just because of the drafting issue, Staff is capable of redrafting it, so it's a special exception use. I mean, that's, this wouldn't be the first time they've done it, they just did it with ADUs. So, I, I mean, it, it, they're capable of doing, implementing that direction unless you really want to see it again. I'm just slightly concerned that you guys keep continuing things, at some point, you just need to get things-
I guess what we're gonna see is if this happens, then we're gonna see this as a special exception, so.
Your choices are either special, if you, if you're trying to make it a use that isn't as a right, your choices would either be special exceptions, which only come to the planning commission, or conditional use, which come to the planning commission and board. That's basically, I mean, there's difference in criteria, but if you're asking who approves them, that's the main difference.
My interest is more that there's at least one public hearing, and a special exception accomplishes a public hearing.
So-
I'd still rather see it before it went back to the board.
This is up to the planning commission. Unless, is, well, I'm asking you, Terry, is it, is this one of those ordinances where the board gave you some deadline to get it adopted?
I don't think the Board of County Commissioners has issued me a deadline, although I was a, and I may be not, don't have the full picture here, but I thought that there was a, a deadline on the part of the county attorney's office for this to move forward.
Oh, so you're the guy.
Well, okay, well.
Again, I don't, I don't know if I have all the information, but-
So, I've not discussed what that was saying, but I, my understanding, though, is that nineteen dash twelve was invalidated, which basically reverts us back to, they're not allowed at all. So, the question is whether we're okay with the status quo, which is they're not allowed at all. I don't think we're permitting any in the interim is the issue. So, even on lakes, technically, they're not allowed it currently. So, I don't, as long as nobody, as long as the board has not told you that they're unhappy with the status quo for another sixty days or whatever, then maybe there isn't any urgency. Terry, are you?
We were, we were imposing our own deadline to get the project to the board and to the finish line by April in order to, you know, close this gap as fast as we could.
Has it been advertised for the board meetings?
Yes.
So if it's continued, you're going to have to probably re-advertise it?
I don't know. We'll have to re-advertise, but we'll definitely have to continue at the board meetings.
Okay.
For the moment, I'm going to withdraw the motion. And that's so I can ask the staff another question. Is it necessary for this issue to be addressed in the land development code? In other words, could this be addressed in the code of ordinances?
I, I would, I'm going to defer to David Goldstein as an answerer first.
But, well, how does that help anything? I mean, I, I think it is a form of development, so it probably is appropriate to locate it. I mean, you're allowing development to occur. And by the way, if you want to make it a special exception, it definitely needs to be landable because that's where we regulate special exceptions. So, I don't, I don't, I think it is in the proper location.
Okay, all right.
So we're back to no motion on the floor.
John, why would, why would you want to see this again rather than just recommend it go to the board for the special exception with the staff drafting the language?
Because I think sometimes there are, if, if all we were making was an ordinance that contained one sentence or one paragraph, yes, but I think there's other issues in here as well. And I'd like to see the whole. And the reason for asking, could it go in the code of ordinances, is you've got one, two, three, four, five people here that don't want to make a motion.
I made, I made one.
That's true.
Just wanted to make one.
Make it again. Then make it again.
Well, I mean, I'll make another motion to deny the ordinance again.
I'll second it.
And again, I, I think Barbara raises a valid point with, you know, the timing's not very good either. I mean, most of the people that this affects, most of them don't even have their house right now. So who knows if they even got noticed, if they even read or even paying attention. They're trying, they're upstairs trying to get a building permit to fix their house.
So to be clear, your motion would have to be that you're finding it inconsistent with the conference of plan, because that's technically your role for this ordinance.
That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. It's seconded. Further discussion on the motion. Silence is deafening. No further discussion. Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now you're definitely not going to see it again.
It just may come back at a different form.
And that concludes the agenda for today, commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, before we conclude, though, I'd like to ask Mr. Devine to come forward, please.
Uh-oh. William Devine, Planning Development, Economic Growth Department. I know some of you may have already heard or are aware, this is my last planning commission with Pasco County. I have accepted a different position, and that will be with the Pasco County School Board. I'm working with Chris Williams and Richard Tonello.
Steve.
But I do want to say a couple of words. I have loved my time here working with all of you. I will greatly miss it. I loved our short meetings that were less than maybe five minutes and our long ones that have gone to nine P.M. But I remember starting here four and a half years ago, and I actually worked during COVID and I actually worked the kiosk for Planning Commission. So that's when we actually had public comment from a different location and they came in through a kiosk. And then I started presenting as a planner. And I have facilitated and filled in for our dendo coordinator multiple times. And I have absolutely loved my time with you guys, and I will certainly miss you. But I hopefully will have a new role with Planning Commission in the future, which I'm excited about and may be able to sit up there alongside of you at some point. But there are certain individuals that I want to call out. Denise Hernandez, my mentor and probably favorite person besides David Goldstein at the county, county attorney's office, Carly and Linda from the county attorney's office, as well as David and Elizabeth. I have learned so much for those individuals and continue to do so. My zoning team, Fred, Krista, Jody, and Ruth Ann, could not be who I am today in zoning without them. They have definitely taught me a lot. And I will actually say Barbara Willhite, because she has been an excellent companion in the development community as well. Always very understanding of staff's limitations on certain things, and she's always worked well with us, or myself, I will say. So I hope to see you guys soon.
So I do want to say, damn you, Chris. You know, I do think that, yes, it's a tremendous opportunity for the school board to get Liam, but it is a tremendous loss for the planning department, tremendous loss for me personally, who reviews a lot of the zoning items. Liam was an extraordinary employee. Very quick turnaround on items, you know, always found solutions to issues, ways to get across, things across the finish line. Very sad to see him go. Damn you, Chris. That's all I'm going to say. So, yes, I'm going to miss Liam tremendously, but glad at least he'll still be.
Yes.
Liam, I've come to know you and appreciate you tremendously over these last few years. And, and I'm going to miss you too, damn it. But I'm glad to know that you're going to be close by and, and hopefully we'll see you sitting up here occasionally and, and.
He'll be breaking ties.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Breaking ties, that's right. We could have had one today, you never know. So thank you for all you've done and for being so helpful to me particularly. And I think I speak on behalf of all of us when I say, you know, we had a great admiration for you and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liam. Anybody else have a comment?
I'd say the same thing.
Yeah.
It has nothing to do but, one, my experience with you at the planning commission has been an absolute pleasure. But my experience with you in my profession has also been a pleasure. And you are truly, or have been, an extraordinary, and just as David said, an extraordinary employee with the county. I've never had anybody more professional call me back within fifteen minutes or an hour if you were tied up in a meeting I can count on. If Liam didn't call me that day, he was going to email me or text me to let me know, I'll be in touch with you first thing in the morning and we were going to get the issue, the answer needed and the issue resolved. So, and I appreciate that.
I will say Denise used to scold me a little bit because I will be on vacation on a boat messaging people back. And she used to note that and certainly tell me off a little bit sometimes for why are you answering when you're on a boat? So, and on vacation. But I absolutely love what I do. My colleagues will note that I come in every single day, super happy, you know, joyful every single day because I absolutely loved it. And I'm going to greatly miss it. But I do look forward to my new opportunities with the school board.
All right, thank you again.
Well, and those are the qualities.
Do you have any apologies to make?
Those are the qualities we saw, and that's why we're excited to have Liam join our team. But just so you know, Richard and I are not going to be here forever. And so, I'm probably retiring in about two to three years. Richard is, I'm not sure, he changes from day to day, but he's probably two to five years. And so, we're trying to do succession planning. So we're excited to get somebody who's a lot younger than us old guys, who can maybe come in in the next couple of years and figure out what the heck we do and do a better job of it than we do. And so that's our, that's our plan is to, and the reality, too, is that prior to 2010, we actually had five people in our department. We recently just got back to four full-time people in our department. This will bring us back to five. You know, and obviously, the county has grown a lot in the last fifteen years. So, we're drowning. So we're happy to get another person on board to help us and learn some of the things we're doing, but also continue with those connections with the development community as well as with the county.
Thanks, Chris.
So Chris, I'll send you to the long meetings now?
Yes, that's right, another person, because April meeting's looking pretty long.
April seventeenth. See you then.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Liam.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liam. Okay, so, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I might even ask for an aye.
Trees and wildlife depend on you to keep them healthy.